Evening and welcome to the November 1st School Board Meeting. I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda? No? I would like to start with the superintendent's requested budget presentations, your budget overview. Dr. Jettie?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So just a couple of things. Remember, I think this is our third year of doing the budget presentation in this format. So we have transmitted to the board last week a draft budget. We've also shared that with members of the Budget Committee so that they're able to observe this process and understand the presentations that are coming directly from our principals in the schools and also our directors. So everybody is here tonight to make that presentation and we're ready to answer questions that you may have on this budget. But before getting into that, I want to make sure that we go through kind of the annual reminders of the things that we need to be mindful of as we talk about the budget proposals. So the first thing is that a reminder to the board and to the audience that budgeting is what motivates our team on how to improve our performance and to achieve our goals. The school board did a really good job of crafting a set of goals. And I'm going to display those and I'm not going to walk everybody through all the details. But I think it's important that everybody here remember that our board has set a mission and a vision and a portrait of a learner, and these are the things that we try to achieve each and every day. So our work in the schools, working with the children of Litchfield, is really to have the mission and the vision come to life to make sure that our learners are achieving the critical components that we've identified, so perseverance and adaptability, integrity, communication, and critical thinking. And the budget drives that. So when we put together numbers and we put together staffing levels and we put together facilities, we're trying to make sure that we realize the things that are identified as part of the board's goals. And then there were five overarching goals. The first is love of learning. We know that our students and our staff, if they love learning and they embody that, that is what will help us to be the organization that we want to be. The second is great teachers and great staff. We can't do this job without personnel. You're going to hear over and over tonight that 78% of our budget is people. And having great teachers and having great staff and having contracts that attract and retain those folks is absolutely critical. And in the era of diminishing personnel who are available to come into work in our schools, we need to keep this in mind and make sure that we're driving toward having great teachers and great staff. The other is post-secondary pathways. So if we're talking about the portrait of a learner, it's lifelong learning. It's what will people continue to do throughout their life. And having those post-secondary pathways is absolutely critical to make sure that every child leaving Litchfield Schools is not done. They're not graduates and done. They're on a pathway of learning. I learn something new every day. And we need to make sure that we instill that and create those pathways and opportunities for our students going forward. Also, facility improvements. It was pretty obvious, and it is pretty obvious to people who walked around, that our facilities are in need of improvements. We're making drastic and sustained improvements at our middle school as we speak. Every day, it's getting closer to project completion and becoming a better facility for our students. Our elementary school continues to be a sore thumb, and we have got to get a game plan on how we're going to go after that. I know we've had a lot of game planning that has gone on, but we haven't done anything yet. And so keeping in mind, facility improvements will be important. And even our flagship building is now 22 years old, and systems are going to start to fail. They have been failing there. And we can't just say, it's the new school. 22 years is going to be in need of some ongoing maintenance and so forth. And then the last thing is community engagement. We need to make sure that we continue to engage with our community. Our parents expect a lot of us from the schools, and they should. They pay a lot in taxes to realize the service that we provide. And making sure that we're engaging with our community to achieve that has to be part of what this budget pulls together and pulls off. And then a reminder to everybody watching at home or in the room tonight that we take those annual goals and then we put them into action steps. So this, although it's labeled draft, it's the final draft, which is, what is it we're doing as a district? So we're paying attention to getting the LMS building upgrades completed. We're paying attention to a new elementary school in Litchfield. And we're paying attention to the culture and climate going on in our schools. We want to make sure that our students feel safe, will embrace the love of learning, that our staff embrace being with us. And so doing work this year on culture and climate is a district action step. At the high school, you can see that they continue to work on their PLCs, making sure that they are truly collaborating and providing the time for the faculty to be able to talk with each other and to make improvements. And also their advisory program, redeveloping that to make sure students feel connected with the school. They also have increasing awareness and usage of multiple data types. So we continue to dig into statewide and national testing data that we get and also fostering a positive staff climate and culture in the building. At LMS, we're looking at social-emotional learning and making sure that responsive classroom, counseling program, PBIS, PLC models, all of those items are supporting a positive climate in the building and for students. Personalizing, so they continue to work on their best block and making sure that we can personalize for the students. And finally, community, increasing awareness of strengths and needs at LMS. And I would say Jen, well Jen and Dan, I think are tied for leading the way with their social media platforms and making sure that everybody in the community understands what's going on there. And finally, at GMS, it's all about PLCs, making sure teachers are working together, collaborating, and enhancing that ability. Social-emotional learning, also paying attention to what our students get out of the experience at the school. And then work-study practices, making sure that we have good learning progressions because we know if the younger students master those work-study practices, it's only going to pay dividends as they get older and understand how, you know, the post-secondary pathway stuff starts to intersect. So just a reminder that when we come to you with budget numbers and when we're presenting programmatic needs and we're putting dollars to the things that we need in order to operate for the next school year, it's driven by those goals and driven by those action items. So it's not an exercise that we go through. It should be the blueprint of how it is that we go about doing our work. As mentioned, facility planning continues to be a major goal. We have a need for an elementary school. It's been well articulated, it's been communicated with the public, and we need to continue to work on that planning process. The second thing is repositioning. And what I mean by that is that we know asking for additional things in the current inflationary climate is not going to be a great idea. So we're examining all of our practices, all of our people, to say, how can we best align what we have as resources in order to achieve a greater value for what it is that we're doing? So you're going to hear over and over in the presentations about repositioning. And what we mean by that is kind of defining what the role is and then putting the right person in that role and making sure that we've repositioned as going forward without just saying, we need another. It's like, how can we achieve that through repositioning? And then my reminder to the board, again, people are at the heart of what we do. It's really easy to start talking about widgets and things and forget that if 78% of our budget is staffing, that we have people who are human beings. They are fallible, they make mistakes, but at the end of it, everybody went into education for a reason. And typically, that reason is to ensure that students have a good experience. And we have to keep that in mind when we're talking about hard numbers and we're talking about hard decisions that we need to make, that it is people that are at the heart of what it is that we're doing. Let me just quickly walk the board and the public through our enrollment projections because these numbers help to drive what it is that we're setting out to do. So the board has seen these, but just bear with me again while you see what we're looking at. If we go back five years ago, we had a total population of 1,304 students. If we go back another 10 years, we're at 1,600 students. So about our largest number that I can see in the enrollment was 1,600. And we've been steadily declining from that point. We now are at 1,206 students, so we've lost nearly 100 students since this chart was started. And, or it actually has the rest of the data, but what it displays here. And we are projecting next year that we will be at 1,164 students. You'll notice that there's a tendency to say, yeah, but we just got approved for new housing units down off of 3A. And by the way, the Red Barn is going to be turned into housing units and so forth. All of this is factored into the numbers that we're looking at. You can see that we predicted this year that we were going to be at 1,230, based on the modeling that we use. We actually came in at 1,206, 24 fewer students. And so those pressures, while real and disconcerting, right? You can look at that and say, my goodness, is this going to hold? We have to trust what the numbers are. And frankly, enrollment in Southern New Hampshire is declining. Families are smaller, people are staying in houses for longer periods of time, and it just seems to be the trend that we're seeing. We're predicting that we're going to be 1,097 students in a couple more years' time. The high school is looking at going from, if you look at the top of it, 439 to 349, a loss of nearly 90. The middle school, from 825 to 708. The elementary school, from 421 to 375. So these are the real practical numbers that we're wrestling with when we're trying to figure out how to make decisions about classes and how to plan and schedule. The rest of it then goes into modeling what we need for teachers at each level, and it's pretty unremarkable. If you look, there's one larger class that is at the elementary school, and that's this class right here. So the 85 students that are, actually, if I go back, they are currently in the first grade. So we have five teachers in the first grade because that class is a little bit larger and warrants the extra teacher. Next year, we're predicting it's going to be 85 students in the second grade. And then, of course, you can continue that across the board. So the fifth teacher follows up with the class. The year after, they would go to third grade, the fifth teacher would follow the class. And then when they hit fourth grade, the class size increases such that that fifth teacher is not needed. So currently, the school is staffed at 4.5, 4.44. That fifth is going to roll until it's no longer necessary, is our prediction. And then we'll be at four classes per grade across the entire school. What could happen? A big kindergarten. That's the one unknown. So there could be that big kindergarten that comes in. But remember, we have not touched the money that's in the reserve fund that allows for that class size. So we do have that one teacher in our back pocket. If we were to hit that kind of enrollment increase, we would be able to cover that. And my other annual reminder is, we're now talking about a budget that is not even beginning for eight months and has to last for 20 months. And anybody who looks back on the last three years, that's a whole lot of time and a whole lot of things that can happen out of the blue. And so there's always going to be an unpredictability factor that goes into budgeting, and I just want to remind the board of that. We're making our best estimates, our best guesses, our best predictions, our best projections. But the bottom line is, this budget does not begin until July, and it has to last until June of '24, '25, June of '25. Actually, that's wrong. It's going to be implemented in July of '23, and it has to last until June of '24. So my apologies on that. All right, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Doug, who's about to begin his very first ever BA budget presentation. And he's going to walk us through some other things that we're going to be talking about tonight. So Doug Totten, our new BA.
Great, thank you. So I want to start kind of with the pathway that brought us to this budget. So it started in the schools. So a group of first-grade teachers getting together and talking about what first graders need. Math teachers at the high school talking about what would benefit kids with math and how they're going to go about learning. So this is our returning teachers, and this is our new teachers. From there, they start meeting with their principals, and then the principals start meeting with myself and Mike. And we also brought in Mary this year too, because at the end of the day, it's about learning. It's about making sure those 1,200 kids who get to come into our schools each day leave a year later with that growth. So we have meetings with each of the principals, and then we meet with the directors as well. So from those meetings, we then have admin team meetings too, where we're kind of talking about things more as a whole, bringing up ideas, seeing, you know, if what's on paper really matches what's at the school as well. So these meetings have been going on now for a while, and from there become the budget that we're presenting tonight. We fully understand it is a working budget, and it's something that we, you know, that we want to work with you to kind of see where we're going to end up at. So as we looked, as this budget got developed, just like our own budgets at home, there are things that are in our control, things that are not in our control. So some things that have been out of our control for a little bit now have been prices of oil, prices of propane, which have been increasing. So it's not just the 5% that they've gone up before, it's much more than that. Also, as we talk about salaries and benefits, that's your 78%, you know. So as a warrant article is approved, which is a good thing because we want to keep retaining those high-strength teachers and we want to keep paying them money so they can keep up with inflation as well, that just, that drives the overall budget as well. So as we look through the budget, you'll see there's a lot of things that we didn't have a lot of choices on, which drove up the budget. We'll go over those in detail starting tonight and then throughout Thursday night as well. So the next slide. A lot of schools, which is a good thing, a lot of towns, they use three-year averages, which I think in a lot of ways is a smart way of looking at things. Tricky part of three-year averages now is just what the actual years look like. They weren't all the same. So fiscal year '20 started the same as any year, and then the last third of it, all the kids went home. No one expected that, and no one expected that, you know, that we would end, a lot of schools would end that year with a large surplus, which Litchfield did as well. Fiscal year '21, we got to kind of welcome back the kids, which was great, but not all the kids came. So there were some different savings with that as well. Then fiscal year '22, which was, I think, great for a lot of people in education. We got back more to normal, which is where we like to be. We like seeing all the kids in school, even if it costs a bit more money. We like seeing them there because that's where they're making their growth. And that's where they're having those social environment, which they get to grow from as well. So, but last year started where Litchfield and other school districts just couldn't hire as many people as we wanted to. So we don't have a typical year in the last three. So while I think it's still important to look at three-year averages, we also want to look at it with this understanding in mind. So as we talked about some things that are out of our control. So we started just kind of adding them up, and they kept on coming through us over the last month as we kind of were able to finalize things like propane costs, oil costs. And again, our oil costs, our electricity brings us out to maybe next December. So it doesn't even go through the whole fiscal year '24 budget. So we have part of the fiscal year '24 budget known as far as like price per gallon, price per kilowatt hours. But we don't know it throughout the whole fiscal year '24. So there's some estimating with that. And then there's also some estimating with how many kilowatts hours of electricity are we going to use? So from that though, we do have some history and where we look at the years that were impacted by COVID. But we also have the years before that as well to kind of look at to kind of help us have a better understanding of where those numbers should be. So as you can see, a lot driving those numbers are increases to things like oil, propane, and electric at our three schools. So you'll see the increases, and this is the total amount. This is just the increase that we have to budget for. For GMS, almost 200,000. CHS, around 150,000. LMS, with its conversion to high-efficiency mechanical as well as solar power, that would actually be a reduction. So the power purchasing agreement is also the total amount of electricity for that year as well. So that would be a reduction even without going up if we budgeted for as it would be. So the next two things on the list are what were approved by the town voters last year. So thank you for that because it is great to retain our staff here. So those are increases for the LEA and LSSA. And then the last thing on this page is a placeholder for health insurance. We put a 10% placeholder. We believe it will be hopefully a little bit less than 10%, but we're not quite sure if it will get less than 8%. So we put a 10%.
I think the town was 11%.
Town was 11%. Yeah. And I don't think this is just a one-year thing. As schools run out of their COVID funds, hospitals are running out of their COVID funds, and they're pushing back, a lot of the costs now back on people coming in. So we wish this slide kind of was just one page, but it keeps going. So we have increases to out-of-district tuition to match kind of that actual amount that's going out. Transportation, so again, that's contractual. So our general, you know, our nine buses that go out each day, that went up by 3%, which in some ways is a bargain with where fuel is. So our contract does run out at the end of next year. So I think our number following year will probably be larger than that amount that we're seeing now. And then the lease for the equipment at the middle school is 363,000. And going into this year, there was that 195,000 that was budgeted for. So to bring us back up to that 363, that's an addition as well. Now, some of that would be offset by, and we'll go into that more detail on Thursday night, as far as what could have been the prices at LMS for fuel as well as, well, if we have new systems, we don't have to budget for our systems break because they're under warranty. So we can kind of transfer that money over there. So if we add up, again, these are just our larger increases, you'll see we're about 1.5 million. So the budget that we're bringing to you tonight is up 1.3 million roughly.
Can I ask about the out-of-district tuition? If that includes out-of-district placements, but also like Alverne and any kids?
No.
Just out-of-district placements?
Yep, out-of-district placements. So we've been able to reduce the budget through the schools. We're all very active in bringing a level budget as far as what they have control over, which isn't necessarily personnel. And they worked really hard with their teams and with us to do that. And we have, which we'll get into a little bit later tonight, we have reduced some positions. As Mike brought up enrollment, we do want to kind of react to the fact that enrollment is down a little bit. So what should that mean for staffing levels at the schools? So I believe that's where I end up. And this is where we kind of start with the directors, and you'll also hear from all three principals tonight as well.
Lauren Crowley, food service requested budget?
Just a reminder to the board, the food services budget is sort of that self-funding budget. So it's a little bit different. That's why we want to present it first. Lauren's task is to feed every kid. It's a small task, right? Just feed every kid every day for the whole year. And to come out budget-neutral is really the goal. So Lauren?
Hi, everybody. So, yep, just like we said, like Dr. Jettie said, we are looking to continue to feed everybody. And so far, the year's starting out really well, so we'll get into that in a little bit. But just to start off with our budget drivers here, we did do some decreases. We did decrease, we eliminated some kind of excess expenditures that we had had in the past, things like laundry services. And we had some lines for the School Nutrition Association memberships for our leads that never really got used. So we did kind of do away with those. Actually, our special ed teachers approached me about life skills for their kids. So they're helping us do our laundry and stuff. So it's all in-house, and it teaches them some life skills as well. So that's, you know, kind of a double whammy on that one. So that's about maybe 300, 350 bucks a school, which it's not a lot, but it's a little bit. And then we also decreased the repair and maintenance line for LMS by $2,900 because we are anticipating getting all that new equipment in. Those will have warranties, hopefully should not have to repair brand-new equipment. So we did do that. On the other hand though, we did obviously, you know, it's the economy, it's where we're at, is we had to increase our food lines at all the schools due to inflation 11%. We, Doug and I researched, you know, where we're at in terms of food inflation, and it was about that much. We also added in $500 to each supply line, again, due to inflation for those items. But we're also looking to purchase a vending machine at the high school that can hook up to the kids' meal counts. And they can purchase meals and stuff for whatever, if they're after school for whatever reason. It'll have a debit credit card reader. And we're kind of still in the negotiation phase of that line. So it could fluctuate a little bit, but that's going to be an insane revenue maker for us, and we're really, really excited about it. So in terms of everything else, it's going really well. We're averaging about 540 reimbursable meals per day district-wide compared to, which is about 200-ish meals than last year. We're down about 200 meals. But compared to pre-pandemic, we're up about 50, 60 meals a day on average. So it's going really well. Breakfast at Griffin is awesome. There, I think they did over 600 this past month. So that's really great. And, you know, we're fully staffed, so that means we're able to get really, we have really great people in place to feed the kids every day. And, you know, we have a really good crew, so.
Because you look back to last year, that was when, you know, food was free, they just refunded the food.
Yeah.
So what happened was that a lot of more kids got to try out the food, and they liked the food. So now they're coming back and now, you know, paying for the food this year, which is great. And a testament to Lauren and her staff.
They do a good job. They do a really great job. So we are feeding more kids. We fed more kids last year than we ever had, like chopping out over 150,000 reimbursable meals, breakfast and lunch district-wide. So not as significant of a decrease in participation as I had not anticipated, but was like hoping wouldn't happen. But so luckily, that didn't happen. And like I said, everyone's doing a great job. We have the middle school snack shack back open, that's going really well. So we're just looking to keep giving out more options and keeping more kids happy.
So at this time, we'd be happy to go page by page through the food service budget, take questions on each page, answer any questions that the board may have. Or if there are things that you want us, if we can't answer tonight, we'll get you an answer for Thursday night. So just let us know what you need to know.
Would you like to go page by page?
I only have one question, and it's on page three.
It's a very extensive budget.
Okay, thank you. Andrew?
Yeah, so on page three, I see that you also, there's a vending machine at CHS already in place.
So that has not been purchased yet, no. So that would be, this will be year two of four. We have a budget line currently with about $3,500, and we are looking to make the initial purchase. So that would be on the '23 budget. And then, which we already have the money for, allocated for another piece of equipment that we are no longer going to need. So we're going to purchase it on the '23 budget, and then the '24 budget is payment two of four. It's a four-year lease.
So you're going to require a vending machine for CHS this year?
Correct.
Got it. And is it the same type of vending machine you're considering for LMS?
Yes. So if it goes, I mean, I plan on it going well, but hopefully it goes really well, and then we get one at LMS.
That was going to be my question, how's it going? But you don't know the answer to that.
Well, no, because they custom design it for the school.
Refrigeration and meals?
Refrigeration, there's like a wrap that you can put on for like your logos and stuff like that. And they literally custom build the machine for what I want it to do. So if it goes really well up at the high school and everything's successful, then we'll start the project for next year.
Just put ramen noodles in it.
Ramen noodles for everybody.
Just ramen noodles.
Ramen noodles and General South's chicken, we're good.
I wonder if it makes sense just to wait a year, right? And to test the one at CHS before going to LMS instead of including an LMS one? What are your thoughts?
It, but we'll have to see how it goes, I think. And I, what do you think about that, Doug?
So it's about five months, I think, from when we signed to when we actually might get the machine too. So that's what we're trying to kind of think around as well. I think it's definitely a no-brainer at the high school. You know, and it also gives the kids at that age who need to kind of practice their purchasing as well, and at that age, you're kind of practicing their purchasing, a chance to do that and kind of have some choice. You know, it is a different thing at the middle school.
Is it all meals at LMS? Is there a drink one yet at LMS?
We're in the process of getting that.
That's the one that I think is absolutely needed at LMS.
We're in the process of getting, the one that's currently there is a little outdated. There also is a, I have a struggle of what we actually offer, but I'm working with one of our new vendors, Polar Beverages, who can get a machine in there. It doesn't cost us anything, we just have to fill it with their product. So that's what we currently have for drinks at the high school with Bella Vance. So we have a couple vendors we can use.
I don't mind the idea, I'm just wondering if it makes sense to... I don't mind the idea, I'm just wondering if it makes sense to prove the model, right? And see how, see what the return is and see if it makes sense at that point.
Yeah, I don't, I, I.
The good thing about the vending machines is it opens up the nights, it opens up the basketball season, opens up the weekends when kids are in there too.
That is true.
So.
And it would help with our reimbursable meal counts as well, get those higher, it could help with breakfast counts, getting those meals in there too.
To go with what you're saying, Andrew, I think, you know, with having the high school one in there first, we'll see how that goes. And whether we purchase the middle school one would kinda be dependent on that too. And because we would be restricting most likely the middle school one a little bit more.
Right.
You know, it wouldn't be necessarily open throughout the whole day like the high school one is. So, you know, you're gonna have less revenue per chance at the middle school. But we'd have some months before we'd have to make the decision to purchase that one too.
And there are other options of models of vending machines as well. So the one we're looking to purchase for the high school has the capacity for the meals, the snacks, all that other stuff. There are some that don't have refrigeration that maybe could just, you know, depending on the revenue amounts, could maybe be a snack machine. And that might be a better option down there. So there's more to negotiate and explore.
Is the whole vending machine 14,000 over four years? Is it equal $3,500 each year? And wasn't wondering what the break even is that you anticipate?
So we're still negotiating that yearly price, as I had mentioned previously, with the representative. So I don't have that information at this point in time.
So at this point, it's a little bit more. They came back with a 7% kinda interest for the four years. So that's where we need to kinda talk to them about. That seems pretty high to charge if they know we're gonna pay for it and they know we're a school.
Yes, okay.
But I think you get the most bang for your buck at the high school.
Oh, 100%.
Without a doubt. And I'm with Andrew on this one, maybe we should just do a pilot machine at the high school.
But we could always not, if it doesn't go well, we don't have to use it, right? The money would be in the budget so that if it does go well, we're able to move on it next year.
Correct, exactly. We're anticipating it going, we're anticipating it to go well.
But if it doesn't, it doesn't, if you don't use it and cut it.
Yeah. And if we think it's gonna go to the middle school, you know, we could use the middle school money to pay off the high school one earlier, which would save interest as well.
Absolutely.
So we'd have that option as well.
And you'll have a few months, if you were to sign soon, you'd have a few months at the high school to kinda give.
Yeah, so if we're looking at, if like we sign tomorrow, we're looking at February, March, so.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, have a good night.
GMS requested budget. Dan Mitchell, you're up.
Do we vote, like topic by topic? I honestly only did it once the last year, I don't remember what we did.
We don't, we haven't traditionally approved sub-budgets, right? Although food service is kind of a standalone.
Yeah.
But what we've done in the past, we sort of make the presentation, we're back here again on Thursday, so motions to cut at that time, you know, would allow us. And I think also it's hard to, it's hard to make decisions until you see the overall budget.
Correct.
I'm actually gonna suggest that we might've made a mistake not having a meeting on Monday or Wednesday next week, because history actually shows that we're not ready to wrap it up this Thursday. So unfortunately, we, that was an oversight on our part. So we probably oughta keep that in mind to get where we need to be. But it's the pleasure of the board. If you wanna take votes or make motions as we go, that's fine.
I'd like to wait.
Yeah, I'd like to wait, at least to the end.
Excellent.
Okay. So in year three, this is actually what I'm considering my first kind of first normal budget that I'm preparing for you, as Doug very nicely laid out on where we're at. So this year, I was able to create the budget, going through the process, but also with kind of three goals in mind. One was to have it driven by looking at prior year's spending, determining needs, to clean up some of the stuff that was in the budget in terms of descriptions and so know exactly where things are paid for. And then also was to offset any increases with decreases. The goal is to do that in the section, but that's not always possible. But overall, any increase was then offset. So I'll point out a few things before we go through the page by page.
Please try again.
Sorry, Siri.
Siri didn't like that.
Please try again.
Just before you get into it, one quick question, if I may. Your budget doesn't include the fuel, right? That's in district-wide. Where's the fuel increases?
It's in buildings and grounds.
Buildings and grounds, okay, thank you.
So for instance, you'll notice anywhere where you see Project Lead the Way or PLTW, that was one area that we could identify through prior year's uses that we did not need to account. So those were cut, kind of 50% right across the board. So right there, that could offset some of the increases. Now, what we did determining the needs, this question is asked all the time, and so I answer it every time, I always put in a new classroom set of furniture. And the reason why is furniture purchases that happened prior to me, I believe I would say were overly budget-conscious, I will say that. And they were not made for long-term, so we have a number of student furniture that is plastic-based, pressed particle board, and they just haven't lost. So we're actually slowly, one classroom at a time, so I've included, I've kept that in. Another thing that we determined, speaking of living another year too, by having Mrs. Van Naylor come on last year, being her first year to live through the health office, we realized some huge deficiencies, not just in the office, you've already seen it, it's pretty deficient. But also, one part about the health office is that it is not portable. And so throughout the year, and on one particular occasion last year, when we really had to be portable, she was not. And so you'll notice that there's an increase of a nurse's cart that really makes the health office portable. This year, we're making do, and I'm not kidding, we've converted a Chromebook cart to make her portable. That's obviously not ideal, and so you'll see that in there. And then also, again, with the learning commons, trying to get, making the switch from, I carefully, I don't use the word switching from traditional, but actually moving more towards future-based, it has a heavier tech focus. And so we tried to offset some of that. But going from reordering a number of nonfiction textbooks that sit on the shelves and kind of go on the cart, and so when the classes do their country projects, that cart of the little country books kind of travels around the school, we can invest in a Pebble Go subscription and that makes it, it's multi-user and it's a nonfiction, so that was kind of a no-brainer. And then in terms of cleaning up the budget, I've tried to break out a few things. So you'll see, kind of, if you remember in past year's budget, the music budget seemed much higher than the other UAs. And the reason why was because in there was also the money that was utilized for our spring family arts nights. It was just there but not spelled out. And so the music budget is still a little bit bigger, but at least been able to spell it out. And then you'll see that what's truly music is more in line with the other UAs. And so overall then, we do have a decrease in enrollment that helped offset some of the increases that were put in to adjust for inflation. I generally used a 3% increase indicator, which we know that inflation is much higher than 3%. There were a few isolated incidents where I did a 5% increase. And for instance, again, that's by living the budget. So you'll notice that art was based on a 5%. And in fact, the specialized, like the art paper, not just regular copy of paper, but the construction-based, the oak tag, we actually realized an increase due to inflation of 40% on that last year. So we weren't unable, so we put a 5%. But again, for the most part, the population decrease in most cases offset that, so you'll see that that line is decreased. And so I want to draw your attention to a mistake, and so there is a correction. So enrollment last year, we were basing the numbers off 322, 1 through 4 numbers and 403, K to 4 numbers. This year, those numbers are 311 and 382. There will be times when you read through this budget in the notes, you're gonna see a 311 or a 382 still accidentally in there. Either I didn't change the note or the note didn't change because I didn't press the save button enough times because you had, but I can assure you that the math is correct. So the amount is based on the correct numbers, the note may just reflect the wrong number. So I apologize for that and I'll clean it up.
And Dan, where'd you get those enrollment numbers from?
That handy dandy chart that you showed earlier.
That's a mine, I love it, thank you.
Well played.
So it's gonna be 322 and 403?
322 and 403 were the old numbers. This year's numbers, if you see it grades 1 through 4, it should be 311. And if it's based, if it's a K through, because some spreading is K through 4 and some is 1 through 4, the K through 4 number is 382. Which leads to a question that does not need to be answered tonight, but for the board's consideration, as we went through, as what Dr. Jettie and Doug referred to earlier, I developed, you know, I meet with my teams, I develop and then I meet with them. And the question that we have for the board is, you'll notice that there is a mirror section. So you have regular ed and then a couple of pages later, you have kindergarten. And it spells out the same thing. And so I can only imagine that it was broken out five years ago or six years ago when we developed our first kindergarten class. And so the question is, do I keep doing it that way or should I roll kindergarten into the 1100, the regular ed line, which will create a one-year kind of balloon in that line, but not overall, because it'll just be offset and it may make for a lot more descriptions. But again, with the intention of trying to clean things up.
Go for it.
We didn't kinda, we didn't have the answer to you, but we thought, let's go to board preference, so I present that to you again. Not to be answered tonight, but just let me know and next year's budget will be maybe a page less or half page less. So that's it. So obviously, I'm open to feedback and questions if you wanna go page by page and line by line.
You have addressed four out of my six stickies, which is, nice job. So my, I guess my overall question about the increases in supplies and the decreases, so my question was, is 3% enough?
No.
Knowing.
Bye.
Right. That's a concern of mine. And is the driver of the decreases, the decrease in enrollment? Or is it that we're not accounting for enough due to inflation? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, so any of the decreases, not any, I would say a majority of the decreases that you will see in here come from an enrollment, are driven by the enrollment decrease or analysis of previous spending, which says we don't necessarily, so for instance, they're a big one. So we had 4,000 for Project Lead the Way, 2,000, I just did a 50% cut because historical spending shows me that we don't reach that 4,000 because we've gotten pretty creative, but we still need some. I could get into PLTW another day.
Right, I'm looking basically at the 610 lines, just the basic supplies for each, you know, kind of across the board, they look like they've been decreased. So, you know, I'm concerned that we.
Yeah, well, I did a rate increase of 3% and then times it by the, that enrollment and that's how I reached those numbers.
Okay. There we, the desks and chairs for the classroom?
Yes.
Are we ordering furniture that could be moved to a new building?
Yes, so, so I will say that, and even for last year's budget, when I met with the staff, I said, any, any requests need to be, one, portable and two, not to address the specific deficiency of this building, because hopefully we'll address those in another way.
Okay.
So for instance, we stopped buying the closets on wheels. We had to get creative about storage because hopefully, you know, if a new building project comes in, adequate storage would be part of the design.
Okay. That's all my stickies.
I have a question in library services.
Yes.
That is page seven. The IC books allow for year-round student access is $6,700. And that's how much we spend every year on books for the library?
So, yeah, you have to go through the, that's the whole, the way the notes go in, that's a whole paragraph that leads to $6,700. This account is to purchase books, print, electronic, warrant, outdated ones, the account is used for purchasing the curriculum and encouraged pleasure reading, electronic IC books allow for year-round student is equals 600. All of that goes into 600.
So was the nonfiction text taken out of that line since we're doing Pebble Go subscriptions?
Well, the bulk, we're still buying regular nonfiction books that will be part of the circulation. But Pebble Go will address many of the large purchasing, so buying whole sets of country books and things like that, or buying whole sets of a nonfiction animal series. Again, think about the model of, you have the cart that goes around because third grade's working on the animal projects. And so Pebble Go allows you to get into a world of nonfiction. So if you have three kids that wanna do a project on a llama, they don't have to wait for the book to be available, they can all just click on animals, llama, and then the re.
Oh, I understand that.
Yeah.
I just, okay, I'm done.
So that $6,700 is basically to address the library circulation. And that's new titles as well as popular titles, because the popular books physically go first.
Then where does the money from the book fairs go? Does that go towards any purchasing of these books? This is just a random question.
Yeah, that generally goes into non-budgetary library spending. So for instance, if one request that she has that I'm working through is, she wants a printer that prints out the barcode labels. And basically the library, I don't wanna say the word maintenance, but it's more.
We don't have one of those?
Hmm?
There isn't one there now?
No, there's not one there now.
Okay. Thank you.
I will say that sometimes she adds the circulation because Scholastic will allow her to take the profits of the book fair in book purchase as opposed to cash.
Yeah, that's what I did when I had a first.
Yeah, she's able to supplement, but we don't want her entire book budget to be based on book fair profits.
Correct.
Yeah.
Tara, oh, you wanna go ahead? Go ahead.
Could you just specifically go over the equipment replacement lines? Like I know you've talked about the nurse cart, which I think is good.
All of them?
Well, I just think that that's an area where we have to make sure that things are explained, because, you know, it's, I think it's important to know that you do have a plan every year to replace one classroom and that is why that's in there.
Yes.
Was it approved last year?
Yes.
Yes?
Yep.
Good, okay, thank you.
Yep.
I think that's important for everybody to know this. And then the smart board purchase as well, that I believe was in there last year as well, doing four of those a year, correct? That's an annual plan or?
So, yeah, this is the first year that you, you see it in my budget. So again, that was the cleaning up. Chris can speak a little bit to that, but I believe it's four per year.
It comes out to being total about four per year.
Between all the schools?
District-wide.
District-wide.
Putting them in places we need to.
Are they TVs or are they still smart boards?
They're more like a TV, but they're interactive still.
They're interactive and they're also on wheels, so that they don't, they don't hold the class hostages in terms of setup of the classroom, so they can actually be moved.
Okay, are there other that I'm, others that I'm missing? Just, I feel that that's important to cover. Understand if those are part of the plan, an ongoing plan to replace those things.
Yeah. I believe that's the only.
I think that that was all, yeah, I did have one question about.
The nurse's cart and.
I did have a question, or was it? The smart interactive projector software license, so is that for the smart boards and projectors that are budgeted? Can you explain how that works?
Which page is that?
So that is on page.
Eight.
Where's the number? Okay, yes, eight.
Eight.
I think that's.
Yep.
Yes, probably.
So we pay for something called Smart Board Notebook, but they also have a cloud version called Lumio and that's kind of, so it does both for us. That's what that software's gonna be for, so we can use Smart Notebook and Lumio on smart boards and the new interactive panels, the new ones we use as well. So that's just to cover that license for each of the features.
Okay, all right. Okay, I didn't realize that the smart boards, I don't know, I didn't know how that works.
Yeah, it separates the board and then the software for the board kind of thing.
Okay, okay. And that'll cover all the new ones that we have.
Yeah. And without, I'm guessing Chris, without that, it's basically just glorified projector screen. And you need that, that's where it becomes interactive.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
I had a question on page five, just as a, more of an organizational question. We have chorus as listed as a co-curricular and then we have student activities, including the scarecrow jamboree, lunch and recess program supplies, and Lego team.
Yeah.
Is there a difference between how those are funded?
No, we wrestled with this too because, and then we realized that this was actually, this was one step that I took to actually clean it up and I may have cleaned it up in the wrong direction. But in previous year's budget, you would have a chorus line in co-curricular and you had a chorus line in student activities. And we talked and we just said, pick one. So based on your question, I may have picked the wrong one. And so that.
No, I'm fine with that being a co-curricular. That makes sense to me because it's an after-school, you know, kids are invited to attend. I, my thought was Lego team would go with that in co-curricular because it's a club. But I, I mean, I don't know what the delineation is.
Okay.
If it's arbitrary, it's fine where it is, but just, I don't know, nitpicky organizational stuff.
No, this, again, this, these are the things that we found and we talked about it.
I think a little bit under student activities, I think have it all there because you have under dues and fees, fees for the chorus festival.
Oh, true, yeah.
Is down under student activities and then Lego team registration is there. So for me, I would just drop it. Yeah, keep it all in one. These are the student activity lines that we have to clean it up a little bit.
I would like to see that as well.
Okay.
My two cents.
It would then mean that GMS has no co-curriculars. Budgetarily speaking. Lots of activities. I'm okay with that.
Busy, busy.
So my overall general comment, first of all, was go Dan when I saw that you had, you were decreased. So good job for your budget over last year. My only question for you is just, is it too much of a cut for you? Do you think this is a manageable budget? Because I know last year's budget was difficult.
Yeah.
And so, and this is less than that, which is great. And so when I see decreases, I, is this manageable, given inflation and given where we are? That was my only sort of overall toss through a softball to kind of answer that a little bit.
I generally think so. And here are the reasons why. When we talk about like seventy-nine percent of the overall budgets, people, like a good chunk of, of this budget is, is a combination of those six tenths, which is the supply lines. And while inflation has taken a huge hit out of those, the method of purchasing has also changed. And so even just five years ago, it used to be bid book. And at this point, you would see that that six-ten line was almost depleted because the best, the most economical way to purchase from those lines was in July, you got this massive book and it was, you'd already done the, you got your three quotes, but the way you did it was you bought eighteen thousand pieces of purple construction paper at the best cost and then you just kind of, and you kind of stored it. Now we're actually in a very much of a, of a, of a fluid purchase system. And I guess, you know, like everyone's competing with Amazon. And so because of that, prices, not necessarily the prices come down, the accommodations that they make in order to get things to you quickly and get things to you and, and, and better prices at smaller quantities that we can really specifically purchase. And so the other thing is, is that with that, have we accounted for everything inflation? No. But we're also like able to control the spending a little bit. So we could make adjustments if we saw that it was kind of getting out of hand with those six tenths. Project Lead the Way is the only one that still hasn't gone on board. And so most of the things we can get, so most of the, the, the projects that have to do will call for Ziploc bags. We don't need to buy the Ziploc bags in Project Lead the Way. But there are still cases where an experiment calls for this really, a set of these really specific beads. And Project Lead the Way is the one that will not sell to us à la carte. They will not. And so if all you need is the beads, you have to buy the whole project kit. And so that's why it's even still as higher than I would like it to be. Because they're the one that hasn't caught on to how the rest of us are living and buying their stuff nowadays.
Email me about the beads. I'll see what I can.
I do, yeah. Actually, and some of them are in mind that we were already talking about some.
No, no.
Is Pebble Go a new, is that new this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're putting it in this year for, for a new purchase.
Gotcha. On line, on page, where did it go? There was one here for FM Systems.
It's probably at Guidance Services.
Yeah.
Four thirty, or twenty-one, twenty, four thirty?
Page five.
Yeah, I had it marked. Where is it?
Page five, right towards the bottom.
Yeah, page, page five, right. So I see its budget is five hundred, its budget is five hundred. My only question is, it doesn't appear over the last several years that we've actually ever spent that line. So just curious as to, is there a need and why?
So we do have students that require the FM system. So we do put it in there because five hundred would necessarily, while we, we haven't necessarily always spent it, there is the possibility that we could need to spend that line. So there is a little bit of a safety in that for that five hundred.
It looks like we spent it in twenty-one.
In twenty-two. Twenty-one, actually, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, and then we did one seventy.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are speakers in the rooms, is that correct?
No, this is for specifically for, for students. Yeah, we have the sound fields and the FM systems are straight tap into, to a student.
Okay.
Things you forget to shut off when you go to bathroom.
Yeah, and it's one of those, we haven't spent five hundred because we've done a good job of staffing the student and the student has done a good job of being responsible, but you know.
They drop.
They drop. In my career, I mean, the FM systems can be like the retainers and it can be a really expensive toss into the trash in the lunchroom, you know, like, yeah.
On the smart boards, this is going back to page eight. Is that a, I heard a new program. Is that a new program this year? Or is that one that's carrying over from last year, the purchase of four smart boards every year?
So I purchased fourteen this year throughout the district and I think in this budget, twenty-four is the last round. And I think everyone will have them in GMS and LMS and then we will work our way to CHS.
Okay.
So it's already been in place and I've just been able.
It's just a continuation.
We're just trying to keep that ball rolling.
Yeah. Currently at GMS, fourth grade is complete, third grade is complete with the new technology. And then we have one in the library, one in second, one in first. And that happened to do with just early imitation and then also moving teachers. Like we had a teacher who had one last year in fourth grade and she learned the technology and she really did it. And then we would do the first grades. We said, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna allow you to take that.
I asked the question because the budget's doubled, right? Twenty-one was sixty-six hundred, twenty-two was sixty-six hundred, twenty-three is twelve-five, twenty-four is twelve-five. So that's why I'm asking about how long this program's been in place.
Mm-hmm.
So was it a new program as of last year?
So last year was when we got the fourth grade systems in. And then this year, we got the third grade system. So yeah, we're, we're currently in, in year two of the rollout.
Thank you.
When Jason rolled it out, there were cost savings compared to the devices that we were using. And the cost to replace the devices was actually higher than going with the newer device. So that's why he made the switch. He also accelerated the number we're getting, hence the reason why it's costing more. So, but it was a purposeful plan to save money in the long run with a device that will last longer.
And I know it's a pebble in the ocean too, but they're more energy efficient than the old systems do. One quarter to time.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
All right, thank you.
Come on up, Mrs. Grantham.
So as our grizzled veteran budget presenter leaves the table, I just want to remind, I just want to remind the board that Jen started last year around October first-ish. And so she presented a budget last year that had been.
Didn't own or work on.
This is her first shot to kind of roll out Jen's vision of the budget. So let's switch to her slide and have her give you the overview and then we'll take questions.
So we took into mind as we were developing this budget within our building, within our staff, to really consider where we are financially as a district and to make sure that we were presenting a fiscally responsible budget, analyzing the needs of what we had utilized and eliminating some of the obsolete or older practices that were in place in LMS. We reviewed, reviewed the programs and supplies. We removed all underutilized software subscriptions, including a subscription for over four thousand dollars to Newzella that was being utilized by three teachers about four times last year. So for the twelve uses, I think there are a lot of online resources that are free and available to everybody. We also removed the Scholastic news subscriptions, which were a little bit here and there, but had their online resources that are as good, if not better than the Scholastic news resources. We also saved a significant amount of money in internal creation of and printing of the promotion and year-end certificates. So we're not having to send those out to a printer. We did that within our own building last year, created them myself. The increases in supplies, again, as we've, I've heard everyone speak about so far, the increase in cost of materials. You would notice our art budget has increased by thirteen hundred dollars due to the need. We have new staff and the need to have that kiln serviced. It hasn't been treated in years. And what would be the worst thing to happen is a brand-new building goes up in smoke as they try to use a kiln that's there, but hasn't been serviced or utilized in a long time. We have increased our music budget to account for cuts that occurred last year because the music budget was listed as PPE. I know we talked about coming back to it and in conversations with my team, it was really important to get their money back so that they could get some important music in our music program. So that's an increase. Our science budget has an increase because we have new staff. And if you haven't heard, there's a lot of lab activities and a lot of consumable materials being utilized. But I think all for good reasons for student learning and for student engagement. So there's a good reason behind it. And our reading education increased to purchase materials to address recognized areas of needs based on our testing data. You'll see some vocabulary programs prescribed in there. And that is in conjunction with our reading specialist to take a look at our tier-two instruction and to beef it up in order to help develop a program that helps all of our students be better in vocabulary, which is a recognized area of weakness as a whole.
Mrs. Grantham, can you tell people what tier-two intervention is?
Tier-two intervention is instruction for the regular, regular classroom students. It's not necessarily for students who are identified as special needs. It's for students who may be struggling in a different area. And it allows us to boost that student for a shorter term, six to eight weeks, to provide boost of services so that they don't have to go down the path of needing special ed services at a later date.
Love it.
Thank you. And that's all I have to share with you overall. If you, oh, I do have, you know, this is my first year clicking into the budget program and there were a couple of places where I didn't click that save button enough times. And one of those places actually saved us two hundred and ninety-four dollars. So I would just like to draw your attention to that because I like to get the credit for where we're cutting when we can cut. So if you take a look at our supply line, our classroom supplies, it said three hundred and fifty-five students. That was for our.
What page is that on?
That's on page one.
Oh, okay.
Line six-ten.
Line six-ten. Should say three forty-eight based on the enrollment projections, times forty-two dollars is fourteen-six-sixteen. There's a decrease of two ninety-four. Which then it brings my overall increase to a whopping fifty-nine dollars on the last page, just in case you were wondering.
What was the last page again? Sorry.
The last page, so the very last page, the general fund three fifty-three would bring me down to fifty-nine increase.
Well done. What, what was your formula for calculating inflation increase pass and supplies?
It was the same three percent that we were talking about overall. We kind of just took a look at what we've utilized. You know, there were, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, we were conservative in our spending. And we are working, we have actually looked at realigning supplies. Not that anybody in my building doesn't have access to supplies that they need for their students when they need them, but how they go about getting them is a little bit refined in regards to it's not taking eighty-seven rolls of tape at the same time and then we go into the tape and try to figure out where it is. There's a process in place, a system in place to just help us track where things are going and how many things are going out of that closet at a given time so that we're on top of it.
Can you tell me what Q through V is? Is that one of the programs?
So you're looking at reading instruction, I'm assuming.
Is that the small group comprehension? That's on page four.
That is on page four. So that is the reading, sorry, let me get cut up to where we are.
I have the same question.
So Q, so it says small group instruction for scholastic level. There's a typo right there too. Look at that. Moy, oh boy, instruction, not instrution.
Didn't even notice.
I did. Now. So that is a, a small group, again, for intervention purposes for that tier-two. Q through W is their reading level. So that's for the students in grade five to be able to get that intensive tier-two intervention. Our reading specialists, our special educators, our tier-two tutors would all be able to utilize those materials to meet students where they are and bring them forward.
Is this online?
That is actually a text set, a book texts.
And my last question is Mel's Celebration, one-way band.
Which page?
On page eleven.
Yep. So that is something that was added last year to co-curriculars. So it's about transportation. Hang on a second. What page are you on again?
Page eleven.
So Mel's Celebration, one-way band and chorus. It is not six thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars to transport them. That is, all of those things listed together come out to that total. So that's the bottom of that long list that talks about all of those. See how they all have zero next to it otherwise?
Oh, okay.
So that Mel's Celebration is added to all of those other things where we transport, transport kids for that.
Starting with the forty-five hundred?
Yep. So the.
Oh, perfect.
Transportation to nature's classroom, transportation to luggage transportation. All of those things are combined to get to that grand total.
The notes are definitely very transparent, which is, which is great.
Yeah.
Sometimes they go line, over one line type of thing. So we try.
Yeah, I'm like, holy moly, that's quite a trip. Mel's.
If it goes over one line, we're starting with zero.
I will take a long walk down that way.
Limos.
Okay.
I do tell them that riding the big yellow limos at the end of every day. No.
I have the same general question that I had for Dan, which is, I had to go Jen, good job, great job with your budget. Is it, did you cut too deep? Are you concerned that you might have cut too deep or not budgeted enough for inflation, given that volatility?
I think because we have that flexibility overall to take a look at the budget as a bottom line and to be able to look and make adjustments where needed as the year progresses. I think that we have that ability to be flexible within what we have. You'll notice that, you know, our science lines went up significantly. But that was because they're, they're using materials and they're using consumables and there are things that are happening. And that's about the people, but also about that curriculum and instruction and how important it is that our students are engaged in the learning that they're doing. So where we made those increases, we made sure that there was a balance and a decrease along the way. So I think we can handle it. I, I think it's going to be tight, but it's time we're, at home, we're tightening our belts. At school, we're tightening our belts in a way that shouldn't impact students.
And I know you are certainly doing a great job with the budget. My only thought, and I'm just throwing it out there, is that I have two kids in science that love the experiments. So if there's anything as parents that they need, you know, soda and Mentos so they can make things explode or whatever the question is, I know there's a lot of parents that would happily get those things. So if that ends up being an issue for this budget, given how tight things are, please email out to parents.
Excellent.
We'd like help.
Yeah.
Fantastic. I will take note of that and.
Yeah. Because that hands-on learning is key. That, that's, I think, where the kids are really enjoying science, you know?
I wanted to ask you two on page five. I'm looking at the LMS co-curriculars. And I see lots for Lego and Quater Z and Robotics. And I think that's great. But I also know that you have a drama club, a student council, a chess club, an art club. Where are those lines?
Those are not part of our budgeted lines. Those items come out of our student funds, our student-generated funds. So there is a, you know, for example, the drama club made about thirty-two hundred dollars last year from their ticket sales and their wonderful presentation of, is it Cinderella, not Cinderella, Snow White. Snow White and Sleeping. Snow White and Sleeping. So great production, great opportunity for the kids to, you know, kind of also demonstrate that fiscal understanding of what comes in, can go out. So we have in our student funds, those accounts to be able to, to utilize those programs. And it is not part of the budgeted items. It's part of student funds.
Besides drama, what else is included in?
Art club, chess club.
Art club, chess club, Crusaders Club are all part of student funds. But it's not something that we have a need to budget for because they have, they have the funds there and available to get what they need.
And I didn't see any increase in athletics where, you know, for, for, you know, for game officials or transportation or anything like that.
Not for next year. I think one of the things that we have for down the line, it's a future thought. We've had a lot of interest in, but it's a longer process of talking about bringing lacrosse for the middle school. There's a, there's a question about what that will look like and how to make that sustainable and self-funded. But that's, that's a coming process.
So transportation for athletics and co-curricular went up two and a half percent. So it's kind of the bottom line as you look at stuff, you'll see that the last. So it's kind of the bottom line as you look at stuff, you'll see the last year's budget and then two and a half percent above that.
Okay. But the game officials and all of those rates are still the same?
As far as what we've budgeted with our athletic director, that's what we went through and checked.
So furniture replacement, I think the only thing I see is on page one for, you know, closed for eighteen fifty-five. Can you talk about the need for those tables and what they?
I definitely can. So two things that we have going on, the first line is about providing tables to offer seating options for groups. If you walked around LMS today, you're going to see a lot of classrooms that have the old school desks, which doesn't work for that collaborative working environment that we're talking about, so much like Dan talked about for a classroom, we're talking about getting a few tables. And we also have some classrooms right now that have tables that as a result of the moving out, moving in, moving out, moving in, moving out, moving in with construction, we have legs that are collapsing on these particle board tables that have been around for however long they've been around, so there is some replacement. We have looked within all of the storage in the nineteen thirties building, we've looked to find these tables and we just, it's not like we're just throwing away the baby with the bathwater, they've looked to see if they can repair them, those that are repairable, they're doing that, but we have just found that there is a need and the teachers are looking for those collaborative working spaces, so the tables are there. And then the second one that you see is coming from the music room, so our band and chorus room has very specific chairs to the, the environment.
Horrible.
And they're dangerous. If you look at the ones that we have now, they, they're probably original to the nineteen eighty-two building, I would guess, or if they're, they're old, kids' fingers get pinched in them as they're setting them up. They have a need for the chair to be able to tip up, the chairs need to be foldable so they can be put away so that they can then have the standing space when it's time to practice chorus. So this is replacing, you know, again, being conservative in our budget, only replacing ten of the chairs for this year and we'd be looking at replacing more next year, but it's a, it's a five, two packs of the chairs for that six fifty-four seventy-five.
All right, thank you.
Andrew, did you ask this after?
I'm good.
Excellent.
And so I just want, also wanted to just point out that, so I think that there are four smart boards in this budget as well, so there's eight total for this year, is that correct?
It'll be fourteen total.
We were, we were extremely lucky this year with the construction and with the need to be able to have mobile situations and as they were taking down the ceiling grids, a lot of our older ceiling-mounted projectors became either obsolete or had to come down and rather than put up something that is obsolete, Mr. Jamrock was great in getting us those new line panels, so the teachers have that flexibility in the classroom so they're not stuck facing one wall.
Thank you, Mrs. Grantham.
Thank you.
Mr. Hess, your turn.
For those of you who don't know, this is Mr. Jacob Hess, our high school principal.
You too.
Who's now a tomato.
Hey, super excited to be here, thanks for having me. You know, a lot of the same spiel that Dan and Jen gave, you know, we looked at the high school budget and really kind of just looked at where we were fiscally and I told our department heads, hey, let's, let's be smart and they were. You know, if you look at our, our regular ed programming, you know, we're up fifteen hundred bucks. Nine of our departments are either underfunded or level funded. We have a couple departments that are up because of, you know, inflation or software or a need for some textbooks for some AP classes. Our overall increase is sixteen thousand dollars, it's twenty point five percent, seventy-five percent of that is CTE costs, tuition. So I think we did a really nice job of making cuts where we could, you know, before you asked the question, I don't know if you would, am I super happy with this budget? You know, no, but you know, being in the building for four months, this is the best budget for us to put forth as a district, you know, I, I would love to add things and make it my own, but I'm also conscientious of where we are and where we need to be as a building and a district. And I give, you know, ninety percent of the credit to my CS and my teachers, my admin assistants and the admin team for putting together a, a pretty, a pretty conscientious, I think, budget. You know, our, our big driving costs up, like I said, our voc ed tuition, athletic transport, we've got, you know, I'm sure we'll talk about it in a minute, you know, we're about fifty-two hundred dollars up in athletics for some safety concerns and some game managers and referee pay for how they're changing that, you know, Josh can, more than happy to talk about that if we get there, you know, but I think we did a relatively nice job of, of coming in and, and being fiscally responsible as a school. And so that was my approach. I've always tried to budget for what I value and I think that we did that in a way that was a necessity for this year.
Jake has some other team members with him tonight, maybe you can introduce.
Yes, I brought Valerie Nelson, our director of school counseling, and Mr. Joshua Knight, our athletic director as well.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, please.
Why are we replacing just one oven?
We have an oven that's a little bit older than the other ones, it doesn't work as consistently as the other ones, the temperature fluctuates quite a bit.
Like my oven at home.
It's been repaired, it's been repaired twice, so she cut her supply budget significantly so that she could ask for a new oven and a new dryer.
Is the dryer under, not under FAPs?
It, yes.
Is it still under FAPs?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just curious. And my other question is, Mr., I mean, Josh should come up and talk about this, why is your travel going up and the middle school is not for refs and game officials and all those other things?
Travel did go up in all, all buildings.
The game officials didn't add?
So game officials did not.
We added a game officials line of seven hundred and fifty dollars. And then there's a, the line underneath that is basically a contingency line, so Josh could explain a little bit more, but they're changing the way that they reimburse refs, so it's like a base of eighty-one dollars.
Eighty-three.
Is that just at the high school or is that at the middle school too?
From my knowledge, it's the high school, it's like fifty.
Okay. I just want to make sure that.
So it's a base of eighty-one dollars and then there's more money depending on how far the ref has to travel to the game. So within ten miles, it's X amount, within twenty miles, it's a little bit more. So we, we budget what we usually budget and then I put in a, a line because we don't quite know how to adequately budget for that.
And I saw that there was a game manager added?
Yes, we underfunded probably because I think that amounts to about twenty-five dollars a game roughly, so, but that's.
So an administrator or somebody can be there because we've had incidents with parents and Josh can't be everywhere.
Correct.
And this, the times we live in that we need another person. I have seen it, I'm sure Mrs. Hersberger has seen it, some of the parents, I think that's money well spent just for the safety and well-being and reputation for our school.
I very much agree with that. I think whenever you go to a new district, you have, you get to learn from that district and this is something I wish every district had a game official, that way you know you have a trusted adult that has a cell phone that can kind of react how you'd want an adult to react.
How many days in a row have you worked?
Right now?
Mm-hmm.
Eleven.
Yeah. Not that I didn't enjoy seeing you, but it's a lot. All right, you want to start with Tara, do you have any questions?
Just want to try to cover again if there's any furniture, I'm seeing very little, there's just one classroom chair for a teacher, I mean, I'm just, I just, there's not much furniture in here, which, you know, we all appreciate, but I do realize that there, you know, something's going to fail. And then there's stools, what else is in there that, is that it?
That's about it when it comes to furniture. I think that in the stools, we're almost done replacing all of those in the shop, so that line will, I don't know if, either next year or the year after will be done and then, so we won't have that budget line in there.
And then the bandsaw, I know that, I know that is critical because it's not working right now and kids are not able to even use it.
And I'll, I'll give credit to John Vandecar as he built this budget as well because he said, let's be honest, inflation on building materials is going to be eleven to twenty-five percent and we came in far below that, we're going to make it work and he said he's going to make it work and we'll do what we can.
I had some questions about some of the art budget that certain classes have been removed from that budget and put as a separate headline.
So digital, digital arts covers our computer digital stuff and ceramics, so Paula Berry teaches both of those classes, so under the digital arts, you'll also see that that's our ceramics class line as well in some of those art supplies.
Yeah.
And then the general art education that falls under, you know, one of, you know, that original one, that's mostly the courses taught by Denise Freeman.
Okay, but I know there are other digital classes like animation and things that are not taught by Paula Berry, is that right?
The animation.
Animation is taught by Sean McDonough, so I just.
Also, his, yes, his design courses and the CT, so that's, that's like the computer tech classes. So again, this is, the classes fell under what they've typically fallen under in years past, I kind of follow along with that, I'm more than happy to clean things up as we go forward. This was really just my, I'm going to take what was done before me.
See, I don't remember that being done before, I thought.
Oh, I changed literally nothing when it comes to moving classes around, so.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yep.
Can you tell me a little bit about the, on page twenty-five, the portable PA system for admin?
Yeah.
Yep, so last year, Josh, you may remember as well, I believe last year it was requested that we get a portable, like, and it was put into the budget, when Mike Perez went to order it, he was given the wrong budget to the admin assistant, there's no money in the budget for that, there in fact was, so that money never got spent. So now we put it in the budget with the intent to order and have that for us to be able to use whenever, wherever we need it for our different events that we do.
So is that for like outside?
It's for outside, we can, we can use it for any, any, anytime we go outside, anytime we want to do something in the cafeteria, anytime that, well, the gym has a system, but if we don't want to hook up that system and use that, it's just a nice portable thing for us to be able to have.
Does it need to be, is it connected to wifi or anything or is it just literally like a speaker and a microphone that you could take with you?
Bluetooth wire, I mean, it's, it's so we can run a system from that portable unit.
So on page one, staple cartridges for all copiers, a thousand dollars for staple cartridges.
That's how much they cost and they go fast.
Are they me?
Yeah.
Yep.
No doubt.
And that doesn't count the days they're not loaded and you have to go without a staple.
Then you have to staple them on your hands.
Hand staple, look at that.
Oh, all right. It's just shocking to me.
I'm sure the company we lease our copy from is wonderful, I'm sure they are, I would never say anything to disparage them, but man, there's got to be something better out there for copy leases.
We talked about that last year.
We talked about that last year too. And then the charge for copies is just astronomical.
Awesome, for my question. I mean, you already answered my general, is this cut too deep?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would love to, I would love to add, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for full new lighting and rigging in the auditorium, you know, we're going to put on shows like this, we have to bring in a twenty-five foot ladder and individually change the gels on each light, there's no way to raise or lower them. I've, I've never worked in a school where that's been there before, so I would love to upgrade it, there's things I would love to do. You know, I would love to be able to tell, you know, the departments like, hey, let's, let's bump those up a little bit, let's be able to get more than, you know, you got twenty kids in the class just ordered twenty books, but we'll make do, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll do it and, you know, we're doing it this year and I, and I think that, you know, as we look at it, you know, and again, this is a budget unlike any that I've worked with before in my six years as an administrator. It's very tight, it's very specific, I think that there's probably a lot of positives to that, but it does leave little to no wiggle room for the desk that breaks in the middle of the year, for the thing that happens. So, yeah, it's, it's tight and, and, you know, we're, like Jen said, the bottom line budget thing, we're able to move if we have to, you know, so we'll, we'll continue to do that and hopefully we'll be in a place, you know, in the future where we can start addressing some of the, some of the wants to, to really emphasize some of the great work the kids are doing and highlight that.
Awesome. The family and consumer science, I noticed that the food supplies have gone down.
Correct.
I think that's food, right?
To buy the oven.
Yep. So she, she cut her supplies to be able to balance the need for a new oven and dryer.
Oh, okay, I got it. Are we working through, I mean, there was some travel, not a lot, to go get food, but I'm just, is she work, is that teacher working with food services to perhaps get better bulk rates or how is that, how's the purchasing actually happening?
I'm like ninety-seven percent sure that she buys it from the grocery store so that it's kind of a, hey, tomorrow we're going to be doing, you know, type thing so she can have fresh stuff. Again, is that something that we can look at and address? Probably.
I don't know how much, to what extent Lauren is still facing, you know, supply issues for food and unpredictable deliveries, okay?
Yeah.
I could worry about the bulk.
Yeah, storage for buying in bulk would be tough.
Oh, I see what you mean, yeah, yeah.
Our food services, a lot of the stuff we buy has to be in bulk.
Okay. So I had a question for Josh, that, I mean, I know we have this store, the BNN, is it BNN or BSN store? So do we get a percentage of those sales and if we do, what, what money, what does that go to?
It goes for more equipment.
More equipment.
Yeah.
Oh, so we buy equipment from them too?
So we get a fifteen percent rate back from them.
Okay.
By repurchase on the stores.
What's it like for uniforms, we get a discount on uniforms? That's what I thought, yeah.
So you'll see on the store it says like fifteen percent off this week, twenty percent off this week. Some of that money is coming back to us, we get a check at the end of the year and then I try and use that check to then help with the purchase of other equipment because as you're saying, full three percent inflation, volleyball is thirty-four dollars I got for one volume.
Oh my gosh.
Wow.
So I haven't changed that line at all over the last couple of years because we're able to cover it from a couple of things, but my volleyball is eighty-four dollars and softball is ten dollars. You see it going to the woods, tossing ten dollars into the woods.
Wow, oh my gosh.
I did not buy from the store on a twenty percent off week apparently, I missed that.
I didn't know there was a twenty percent off.
I bought them in August and they haven't come yet, but.
Well, the team store for golf.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Is the increase in CTE tuition, is it student driven, like enrollment driven or is it?
Yeah, so we, we level funded based on last, last year's actuals.
Okay.
So it was, I believe it was like forty-four or something like that.
And now it's up, yeah.
And so we just, we level funded based upon the actuals.
Okay, because we don't know yet who's going to enroll, okay.
Just a reminder to the board though, that that's a bargain, right? Because first of all, you're personalizing each child's education. A lot of students who take the CTE courses will tell you that's why they continue on in school, because they're really getting that personalized experience. And the other thing is by attending local CTE centers, you're leveraging all the federal funds that support those CTE centers. So if we stop sending out to CTE and we had to educate those students in-house, our per pupil expenditures would go up because it'll cost at least twice the amount, if not more, to educate the student in-house. So it's a bargain, even with transportation factored in, to utilize those CTE centers.
Anyone else have any questions, Andrew?
Nope. I'm good, well done.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just appreciate seeing culture and climate events in this budget as well.
Oh, I thank you very much, I appreciate that.
That was a gold.
Pleasure for working with you.
All right, next up is Holly representing our human resources, so now we're going to focus on the seventy-eight percent. Are we on time?
We are on time.
Excellent.
Not too fast.
We need to, we need to make sure, there's a lot of moving parts in this, so it's really important that we get this right. Before we hit the, I'm sorry, before we hit the personnel part, Holly has a small little HR budget that we want to talk about, so.
It's adorable, thank you.
Take a look at that cute little HR budget wherever it is.
It did go up though, it's less adorable.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry, it did go up by a total of thirty-five sixty-seven because we added Vector Training Software. Vector is an interactive software for. Vector is an interactive software for all of the HR online required trainings for staff. It's a really robust system, it's really cool. It tracks like everything everyone's doing, you know, PD wise, we don't have to print paper certificates anymore. We're actually working in other areas of the budget to add trainings for paraprofessionals because they've used the same old training system, that's not part of my cost though. And same with Alice, kind of integrating it all into one system. So that's why you see the increase for Vector. We put that in place this year. They said it would be a three percent cost increase for next year, so that is the forty-one oh seven. And then there really hasn't been much travel going on, so we decreased that down by four fifty. So again, for a total, total increase of thirty-five sixty-seven.
Didn't we approve the Vector software in the twenty-three approved budget?
It was not with the approved budget, it was year-end funds. So I think that, that's why you don't see it in that line, because it was after the fact.
As a user, I love it.
Thank you.
The amount of time I spend in my life waiting for my kids, I could now make use of.
It's wonderful. Well, and then it's not the manual tracking of who's done what.
Correct.
As a teacher, it's fabulous.
Yeah.
If everything transferred.
You have sections like this, this is a seven-minute section.
Right.
And there's so much more than just like, I've assigned only to people, like here's the required fun HR trainings you get to do every year. Sexual harassment, exactly. But there's so much other stuff in there too that, that people can access, so.
That's good.
It's really nice.
I'm excited to hear about the paraprofessional trainings too. I did a number of those. I, I don't know if it was the same program, but it was the same kind of thing. They just pushed out paratrainings and it was great. It was really beneficial.
Does anybody have any questions? Alright.
So next we'll move on, I'm gonna do a little overview before I get into this personnel piece. I think you have three pages of food services budget. So basically when you look at this food services salary and benefits budget, they're obviously separate from the general fund. The increases you see in salaries there are based off of a support staff agreement. Our food services staff besides the director are part of the support staff agreement. We've also budgeted an increase of ten percent in both of the budgets you'll see for health insurance. That is our estimate, praying we come in under that. I'll have actual rates on November eleventh. Dental, we do have those rates, those have increased by one point five percent. So that would be what you, the big driver within the food service personnel.
Does anyone have any questions about food service salaries?
Just a note taking, post from PB.
Oh, yeah, let me explain that. Oh, it should be. Okay, so when you look at like, so you look at notes under that. So say you're looking at the first page, because you're gonna see this a lot in the other budget, under like health insurance, post from personal budget or post from PB. So in our budgeting software, the personnel budget that houses all the people, all, everyone's benefit costs, their salaries, is completely different than where everybody else's budget lines would be, supplies and stuff like that. So in the system where everyone talks about clicking save a thousand times, you, the notes where you list, like coming over from personnel, that total for health insurance would be before I enter anything in notes wise. So if we want to go back and say, no, we don't want that there, we're gonna take that money out. I put post from personnel budgeting, the money, that's the amount before I add the next line below. So then when you click those eight million save buttons, it will give you that twenty-four requested total. So putting that in there, it has to, you have to write something in the notes in order for it to all add down at the bottom line.
Alright.
It's a fun little system thing.
Great.
So if the post is nine, nine four seven nine, health increase estimate ten percent. Obviously eight thousand dollars is not ten percent of nine thousand four hundred seventy.
No.
How does that work?
No, that's, the post, no, the post from personal budgeting, it's not, the health insurance isn't ten thousand, an increase of ten thousand dollars from just that one line. That's the line that we put the total health insurance in the food services budget in, under district wide. So if you go through each school, there's food service leads at each school that are eligible for benefits, but the budgeted number for the increase is under that district wide line.
So allows us to do two things, allows you to have the most accurate number if we do ten percent without Holly or somebody else having to go into each line and enter it in type of thing. So for all of page one through three, ten percent of all the people from there, if ten would be that eight thousand dollars for health insurance.
Okay, thank you. Page one through three.
Yep.
Got it.
Anything else on HR's cute little budget?
Moving to the big ones, ready?
Moving to the big ones, so.
Alright.
There's a ton of moving parts, so we're, we're gonna walk you through all of this.
So general fund salaries, benefits requested budget.
Alright, here we go. So I'm gonna break it down based off of salaries, benefits, and then positions. There's a lot of things, obviously it's the biggest part of our budget, so I want to start with just highlights. The teachers agreement and the support staff agreement, we are going into for FY twenty-four, year two of those agreements. You will see increases, LSS is roughly three percent. Remember there's five custodian, food service, monitor, administrative assistants, and paraprofessionals. So there's five different grids in there, so they're, they're, they were all at different percentages. So it's roughly three percent increase for staff and teachers, the LEA, that was roughly a three point seven six percent increase for year two. Non-union staff, when we, the very end of the budget, under twenty-nine hundred, there are pools based off of three percent increases for non-union staff. Non-union staff, there's two different pools. One of them shows administrators and one is everybody else. The administrator pool would comprise of the superintendent, the directors, the principals, the assistant principals. Anyone else that's not part of the union would be in that other pool, such as our psychologists, or psychologist. Tudors are part of that pool. The remainder of our SAU staff are all part of that. Severance, this year, luckily so far, it's, we hit the deadline today, November first is the deadline to notify us of severance based off any administrative, administrator contracts and teacher contracts. The budget that you have in front of you that was printed and given to you is a little less because I had one come in yesterday. So the updated total for severance based off of four staff is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. That is actually calculating severance. That is all on page one based off of, that would be money under the salary, one-ten salary line, two-twenty for social security, and two-thirty-two for teacher retirement. So just to let you know, I believe once, later on, once we move forward, you would get, you know, new printouts after the fact. But I just want to let you know that is a change compared to what you have right in front of you. Substitutes, substitutes we budgeted this year for a total of a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. That's up fifty-two thousand dollars. What we did when we looked at each of our sub-lines, you have substitute lines at each school. That comprises of any sub-teachers, sub-para, sub-monitors. Custodian nurses have their own lines, but we looked at what we spent last year, the year prior. Last year, we were in COVID, we had a lot of staff out with themselves being ill or their children being ill. And we, those lines were severely overspent. So that is why you see an increase in those sub-lines. The same thing which, with the next line of long-term subs, that is budgeted on page one under one-twenty-one. That's an increase of fifty K because we had budgeted last year for twenty-five thousand and we spent sixty, let's see, sixty-one in FY twenty-two. So long-term subs would be, that's when you have to hire a certified teacher. If you have someone out, say for a maternity leave or a sudden illness or something like that, after, when you hit day twenty-one of a teacher being out by, required by the New Hampshire Department of Ed, you have to have a certified educator in that classroom. So therefore, we pay our long-term subs based off the per diem rate of step one on the teacher grid. So it's not our fifteen fifty an hour for a sub-teacher, you're paying two-twenty something a day. Again, that fluctuates year to year, you just really never know when you're gonna need that. Next, you'll see a lot of, page one is where a lot of the good stuff is here, six-period classes. This is all contractual type stuff. You know, our teachers can teach a certain amount of classes and have a certain amount of preps based off our contract. We have teachers that will teach that extra class. If it's for the year, it's at a ten percent part of their salary. If it's a half a year, it's five percent. Pay grade changes, September one and February one, we allow teachers to come in if they have, say, they have, they're on the bachelor's thirty track, they have thirty-plus credits over the bachelor's, maybe they go to masters. They would then move on that pay scale. Longevity and vacation buybacks, those are part of the administrator contracts. After ten years, administrator gets a longevity payment of a thousand dollars and then vacation buyback. Administrators have the option if they are maxed at forty days per year, that's our max carryover. So if you're gonna go over that, you're, you have the option to buy back some of those days and put them in a four oh three B. So those are things that I, you know, reach out to staff around this budget time and say, do you think you're gonna look at doing that for this upcoming year? Make sure they're in here. Remember, when we do these budgets, we are, when I run all these numbers, it's on current staff and benefit elections at that point in time. Benefits, health insurance, estimated ten percent for two hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred and nine dollars. Today, I went to the school care annual meeting. They are, they said they're looking at an average among groups of nine point six percent. So I'm hoping maybe we're below average, but honestly, every time they've told us an average, we end up coming above that. Also, in the entire risk pool of school care, so all the districts, all the towns, everyone that is part of that, they were, the entire group last year, they had a ten million dollar holiday premium credit. They are looking at a one million dollar holiday premium credit. So insurance is skyrocketing. A lot of that, they were talking about today's actually prescription cost, higher-end prescriptions coming on the market that just don't have generics at this point in time. So by next Friday, I should have real rates. And then we'll be able to adjust this number, but at this point, we wanted to put a placeholder in just to have us something. Dental, we normally see pretty low increases in dental. We've lucked out over the couple of years. I think last year we were up three percent. That was probably our highest in the nine years that I've been here. Dental's going up one point five percent. We are locked in with those rates, so that's increase of twenty-three sixty-eight. New Hampshire Retirement, in a long time, they are decreasing the rates that the district is going to pay, not by much. But a decrease is better than an increase. So currently this year for teachers, we pay twenty-one point two, oh-two percent of salary to New Hampshire Retirement. Next year, it's gonna go down to nineteen point six four. Employees, so that would be myself, custodians, people that don't fall under that certified teacher category. Right now, we're at fourteen point oh six. They're gonna go down a little bit to thirteen point five three. So at least we see a little bit of a decrease there, because last year they did go up pretty significantly. You will obviously see increases in FICA, those are taxes, those are based on salary. FICA and Medicare and long-term disability due to some salary increases. Attrition, the fun thing we always talk about every year. This year, we had a lot of people leaving. We did bring a lot of new staff in at some higher rates, but we still have a savings of about a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars for this current year for staff leaving and new staff coming in.
So that's FY twenty-three?
Yes.
So is that already taken into account in this?
Well, it's twenty-three.
It's, yeah, so it's, it's the current budget. Like, we always talk about, kinda at this time, I look at like who, we just, who's staff that left at the end of last year and what they came in. So that's just numbers for you to know, really.
So that's this year, but what you're doing is you're, this budget is based off of current staff.
Correct, yes.
So that in essence is accounted for in the proposed budget.
Because you're, you're basing off a current staff, but, so FY twenty-four, I'm budgeting off a current staff, that's absolutely correct. What we look at is, because we're budgeting so far, we don't necessarily know who's leaving. So then I always run numbers to say, who left, who came on for FY twenty-four? So you'd see a little bit more of a savings at that point. This is to see why, you know, at the end of the year, there could be money left over because we had these savings in salaries and benefits for staff coming and going. Alright. Next, positions. So obviously the salary and benefits budget, there's a lot of stuff that we can't control that we have increases to stuff. So we really looked at with our administrative team, our different departments, schools, et cetera, where we could possibly take reductions of positions. So this current budget that's presented in front of you has a reduction of a music teacher. We left it as music teacher because when we look at a reduction of a person, it's a K to twelve pool. Obviously, the position would come from the middle school, so each school would have one position. But just remember, that doesn't mean that's the, that's people, that's just position-wise. Two special education teachers, one we had put in for the budget, this current budget FY twenty-three at the middle school that we did not fill. So we look to absorb that next year. One of the other positions will be from the high school. Again, pool-wise, people-wise, it's a K to twelve pool. Our ELL teacher is currently full-time. We're looking to reduce that to a part-time position. The budget in front of you reduces it to seventy percent. We are looking to reduce to.
Before you leave ELL, so that's what's in front of you, is a seventy percent position. There's ongoing conversation about exactly what the student needs are, exactly how the, we have one person that's in that role.
Can you tell people what ELL is?
Yep, so it's English Language Learners. So these are students who are not proficient in English. There's an assessment called the WIDA that's administered. New Hampshire uses that across every school district in the state. Students get a score on the WIDA and then services are provided based on a student's individual score on them. And so you have some students who are really just beginning to learn English and are here in our schools. And we have other students who have been here for a longer period of time and have progressed more, but they still need support of somebody because they're not native speakers and making sure that they're getting the services to be able to understand the instruction is important. We want to get this number right, and so there's ongoing dialogue. And Sophia oversees the ELL instructor and the department. And so I just want the board to be aware that we've taken this reduction at this time. We might come back and say we cut too tight. We want to make sure we get the right number for the number of students we have. We may come back and say, we got it right, so we're still a little bit uncertain on that, just to be clear.
How are you about the special ed teachers? I know there's, we've received some feedback. Is that due to enrollment or?
It's driven by enrollment and it's also driven by case management counts. So we've taken a look at exactly where we are in all three buildings, how many students are on the caseload, what the recommended caseloads are per. So we've taken a look at exactly where we are in all three buildings, how many students are on the caseload, what the recommended caselogs are per uh state guidelines. And that's what we're using to drive it. So um based on that and known students who are exiting. Um, we feel confident that we can absorb, we can absorb the position that's unfilled at the middle school. And we can absorb one more position at the high school, so.
But that's all pending whatever numbers turn out to be in.
That's correct, yep.
Is this gonna be a stipend position, the special education team leader?
You're ahead of me.
I jumped in on Holly. She's up to receptionist, so.
Oh, sorry, receptionist.
Alright, we're also looking to um reduce the budget has in front of you. Two receptionist position, the one at the LMS office and the CHS office. These reductions of positions um in salary and benefits would be a savings of roughly three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Okay, now there are additions. Liz, we're looking to add um LMS and CHS special education team leaders. Yes, that is a stipended position. We would um work with the union to get it under our co-curricular agreement. Right now, GMS has a special ed team leader, so under our um co-curricular special assignments, um they have one. They also have preschool, but our middle and high school do not.
It's almost like the um.
CX.
See, co- yes, when I curriculum first by for special ed, yeah.
Yeah.
We call them department heads.
Yeah.
The the vision would be that 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 individual would have an even more reduced caseload. And be able to support and help uh their colleagues. Um, and you know, currently, the um. The model is, I mean, we've we've tried in the past to get an assistant director of special ed, um and the voters have declined that several years running. But we continue to need leadership in the buildings and our principals are stretched way too thin. They're sitting in on a lot of meetings as LEAs um and assistant principals. And we're thinking that if we have somebody who is uh capable of serving in that role, um that that will help to make sure that we're getting this right.
So they'll be in lieu of a principal, vice-principal, oh, okay, good.
In some, in some instances, Liz, so.
Okay, yeah.
It it would all be case-dependent. It would all be case-dependent.
But they would be a cer- an LEA?
They could serve in that role in some instances.
That's fine.
Correct.
That would keep teachers in the classroom, which would be great. Huh, let me think about this. I know you've tried different things in special ed, like at one point, there was only a transition person, then there was a person who tested. So that's a lot to take off some of their plates, which would make their jobs a lot easier. They can do my testing too. I'll send it over. That's good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, due to the reductions in the LMS and CHS office of the receptionists. We're looking to add two point five hours weekly to one of the administrative assistants. One currently right now works forty hours, the other one's thirty-seven point five, so we'd like to make them both um forty hours. This would be an estimated cost increase to the budget of ninety-five hundred dollars. If you look in the decrease to the increase, you'll get at about three fifty-five.
And they're already receiving benefits because they work thirty-seven and a half hours.
Oh, yes, yep, absolutely. So it's just salary, like, based off of hours, yeah.
So would that cut any total coverage, total timeframe coverage that is covered by the um the office? I I remember a couple of years back, I think it was, was it GMS that we were concerned that that they were leaving. Before all the buses were finished their routes and we tried to adjust that. Will that?
No, because the receptionists are currently six and a half hours a day. Um, the admin assistants, one's eight, one's seven and a half. So they'll both be eight, so you'll have that beginning to end of day.
So they'll be answering the phones and at the window, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So so the pickle with this is that the uh the busy time in the office is beginning of day and end of day. And so if you take that person out where uh the workflow is not as great during the day. Um, it's gonna involve our administrators really kinda being available and visible at that at those peak times. And that's just the reality of this. Uh, you'll also notice, I'm gonna answer this before you ask me the question, which is why LMS and CHS and not GMS. And the case was made that um our middle school and high school have four grades and greater student agency, right? So high schoolers can kinda come and go on their own. They're driving to school for crying out loud. Um, and our middle schoolers also have more agency. At the elementary level, you have six grades plus um you're adding, I'm counting.
Little people.
Right? And they're all little people, and so. And the other thing to keep in mind is that we've done a really good job of securing two of our offices. So when you arrive at the middle school and high school, you're sort of contained. We have a contained area at the elementary, but it's not the same. The minute you buzz somebody out of that contained area, they're in school. And so uh the way the office is configured and interacts with that space is very different than it is in the other two schools. So um I know a principal who made a very strong case why we shouldn't be touching that and it's not being touched. Because it's just a different setup at Griffin than it is in the other two schools. So when all of this is put in the uh and mixed together, it has resulted in a savings of three hundred and fifty thousand five hundred dollars roughly. Um, and I just think when you looked at those first two sheets, that's how we were able to produce even more savings. Had we not made these uh suggested reductions, um the amount that was up on Doug's slide would have been that much greater. Because these numbers would have been factored in with additions on top of it, right? So.
Just to go back one question there, uh just so I understand. Two receptionists, is that four individuals or is it two individuals?
Oh, two individuals, yeah.
One at each school.
The ones who are sitting right at the front answering the phones and having the kids sign in and out. They're part-time, okay.
So in each school, um Andrew, we have a receptionist in the office, one, and two administrative assistants. So it would be cutting that one receptionist position from LMS and one from CHS. So you just leave two administrative assistants in the office. There'd be no longer a receptionist.
What's the impact to the services that we're providing?
So our our sense is that if you look at comparable schools, they are staffed to where we're gonna end up. So two administrative assistants in an office with a school our size is kinda the standard norm. Um, will there be an impact? It'll be one less person to answer the phone when two lines are ringing. So, you know, it may kick the voicemail or it may uh take longer for somebody to answer. Um, but again, that's the norm in schools our size.
Do you think there's any safety concerns with removal of the positions?
Well, safety's a.
Less eyes and the glass in the doors, you know what I mean?
Yep, absolutely. So but safety is always one of those, it's hard to make that prediction on. Um, but again, when we look at schools, we've done things like enhance our uh secure entrances. Um, and so the eyes on the door are not the same as when it was ali-ali income for you, right? Now you are in a contained area and you can make eye contact with somebody. Hey, I'm right with you. I'm on the phone kinda thing. Um, and so it's it's kinda subjective to answer that question, I think.
In regard to special education, is it right for our district, right? We know that, what is the number, twenty-five percent of our kids, right? Are in some type of special education program. And by reducing by two, is that, is that, does that feel right? Doesn't feel right to me, so I'm asking the question.
So when you look at the caselots and actually the number of students that are on each individual case profile.
Thursday or Wednesday, please?
Uh, we we have those completed.
Okay.
Um, I can switch over to it, but at at any rate.
We can talk about that offline, right? And I think that's appropriate. We'll talk about that. In the vacant positions, right, for salary and benefits, and maybe you'll touch upon this, right? There's three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in vacant positions in the proposed budget.
Yep.
One of those is a special education open position.
Yep.
Is that one of the ones that we're talking about?
Yes.
So in addition to the one that's already been removed, there's another vacant position in our current budget. Cuz I see one in our proposed budget and I'm trying to, is that?
I just, there's one vacant at LMS right now. That's the one that is being referenced here.
But I wouldn't have expected to see special education in vacant if it's already been removed.
No, it's vacant because it's vacant currently right now. So when I ran, like pulled this budget because it's based off of current people, the system holds a placeholder for that current person. So it's a vacant position because there's no one in it. We're not planning to fill it, but it's still in the budget. So that carries over to this budget. That's one of the ones we're looking to reduce.
So those reductions haven't been reflected in here yet?
Right, so I see then.
It is in here.
When it first comes over, it's, it comes over with the current staffing to begin with, and then we have to recall it as an annual entry.
So was that not done? Cuz I see it in the budget. I guess it's where.
It is. So it shows it as a vacant position and then the notes underneath um LMS special ed. Will show the money to remove that vacant position.
How many special educators are at the high school right now?
Seven.
Seven? How many students are at the high school? Three, seven, something?
Four hundred and fourteen.
Okay. Thanks.
Uh, so technically, we have seven case managers. One is being utilized right now in a different role with a very light caseload. Next year, they would all be, except for the lead who would have it, they would all be carrying full caseloads.
Because we cut one.
Correct. And 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 we're able to u- again, new guy probably should be utilizing it differently now. But since we're not, it's a shift that we're doing for next year.
So currently, there's one of the seven who has a low caseload.
Correct.
And you're gonna give them a full caseload next year.
Low caseload used in a different role as well.
Okay, well, that makes you feel better.
So we've got more changes to keep walking you through. Um, and so if we can shift over for a second. There are some other kinda realignment within special services um in this budget. And Holly, do you wanna do this or do you want me to?
You can do it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So uh when I arrived in Litchfield, we actually had three school psychologists. There was one in each school. Um, and over time, it's become incredibly difficult to hire a school psychologist. So we now have one school psychologist based at the middle school. And that person is being utilized as sort of school psychologist and in a variety of different ways. So what we're suggesting with this budget is that we have one district-wide school psychologist. And that we target the specific things that a school psychologist has to do, the type of testing that must be completed by a school psychologist. Um, to that individual on a district-wide basis. So we elevate them out of LMS and we put them in charge of the testing services across the district.
Can you explain that again? They're not like a psychologist go on the doctor and sit on the couch. They are doing actual testing on students who need to be identified as special ed.
That's correct. Identified or it could be uh annual cycle uh testing that needs to be done, but there's.
That a special educator cannot do.
Correct. A special educator cannot do. And the school psych is currently doing some testing um that special educators can do. Because they're seen as sort of the specialist in testing. And so they're being asked to perform things that our special educators can actually perform with training. And so our intent is to sort of say, okay, what type of testing does a school psych, is required of a school psychologist? And make sure that that's the work that's being asked of that individual across the district. And then make sure that our staff in the building, we have the right people to uh perform the right level of testing. So that's what we mean by repositioning here, because we've been asking um, we've been asking for things to be done by school psychologists. That could be done by other people. So we wanna be smarter about the way we utilize our personnel. In taking that uh person from a building-level school psychologist to a district-wide, we are proposing to make them full year. Um, they're currently a school year person with ten extra contract days, but we know that there's testing that will need to be done over the summer. And so it's actually expanding that role to a year-round position with vacation time um with the added costs that would go with that. So it actually will cost a little bit more to have one district-wide uh person.
Can I just ask, what's the benefit of extending them to full year?
So that testing that needs to be done over the summer can be completed by our employee, cuz here's what's currently happening.
Right, that's what.
We are contracting out services at a way higher cost um in order to get it done over the summer. So our vision is that we have one person year-round who can achieve, uh do the services that are necessary. And to reduce the amount of contracted services that are needed. Um, however, if we take a person out of LMS, we need to replace that person. Because there are daily needs at LMS uh that the school psychologist is filling. And so we're proposing to add an LMS mental health clinician. Um, that would be similar to the role that we have at the high school currently. Um, and the mental health clinician would be funded fifty-two percent by the general fund and then forty-eight percent by grant funds. Um, that person has a different skill set, but think of them as more the interventionist. So something happens on a day, the mental health clinician is able to step in and to take care of that. Currently, the school psych is serving in that role. Um, and it's taking away from some of the other responsibilities. So um we're trying to again, make sure we have the right staff with the right credentials in order to intervene as needed throughout the school year. Um, we also, our current LMS social worker is uh currently funded a hundred percent by the grant. And we want that to be moved to be sixty-nine percent from the general fund and thirty-one percent by grant funds moving forward. So um we're trying to make sure that we get the right positioning of how to, how to fund the staff that we have in the buildings.
Is that because you're you're going to fund the mental health commission through the same grant?
Correct.
Okay.
So there's a total cost increase to do all of this of a hundred and two thousand dollars. But, but um the amount of money that we're spending in contracted uh positions. To have evaluations done by uh folks who have the credentials to do those evals will offset this. So in the end, it will be um, it'll be a more streamlined approach. It'll be um in-house personnel who are able to perform this. And it's about making sure the person with the credential is performing the work that needs to be done. And so it gives us more flexibility having somebody at the district level um than at the uh school-based level. With then contracted services. Did I explain all that correctly?
Yeah, I think it also allows us to be a little bit proactive on what we're paying the school psychologist. Um, because schools are losing their school psychologists cuz they're going to other places that that are paying more. Um, so we can either react after that happens to us or pay what is closer to the going rate of a school psychologist. And hopefully, keep one and keep consistency with the person, um so they're they're testing the same students all over, which is, which is good. Thank you, communicate with the same staff.
So this gives an overall increase of salaries and benefits of five hundred thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars. Um, which is a two point seven percent increase, and that was updated on the thirty-first yesterday. So it's probably a little bit more than what you're looking at in your budget sheets. The other thing I wanna do is invite Jake and Josh to come up to the table again. Um, and I wanna talk about two requests that came from the high school. They are logical requests. They are need-based requests. They are things that um I think are important in order to make sure that our high school continues to um to operate at the high level that it has. And it's all relative to athletics. And I'm gonna let them make the pitch with you. Um, so that you understand and can ask exactly about what it is that they're proposing. I will tell you, it's not in the current budget. It's not in the current budget cuz we're dealing with numbers that none of us are comfortable with. Um, however, they have every, every uh right, I guess, to make the pitch about what their need is. And again, it's logical. It makes sense. So Jake and Josh.
Hi, I'm back. Uh, so earlier I said I wasn't asking for anything. So these two are are linked together. Um, we currently uh have an open vacant position for a part-time PE position. That has been vacant for one year.
Yeah.
For at least this whole school year. Um, so these two are kind of linked together. Um, eleven percent of our students were booted out of a semester one PE class because we don't have the staff for it. Uh, there was forty-two students just for semester one. I haven't projected the semester two yet cuz I I haven't thought that far away. In addition to that, our athletic director teaches two classes because we don't have the staff to be able to do that. Um, also with only one PE teacher, our current numbers for our classes are considerably high for our one PE teacher. And we all know that A, thirty kids is a lot in a class. B, having them running around throwing frisbees at each other or doing whatever it is they're doing, it's not the most conducive learning environment. We also wanna be able to reach more kids with our PE program cuz PE today isn't the PE that it was back in the day. We're talking about lifetime fitness. We're talking about reaching kids that aren't our athletes. We're talking about being able to instill in them healthy choices from the beginning. And we're just not able to do that with one PE teacher. Uh, Shannon Ziepan is amazing and the work that she is currently doing is awesome. If we were able to have two. If we were able to have two full-time PE positions and reach more of our students, we're able to free up Shannon to focus more on her kids and then bring someone else along the same lines. Also, with moving the two classes away from our current athletic director, with him not having an assistant, getting rid of that position, there are a lot of other things that Josh has to take care of, he doesn't always have the time because he's teaching two classes as well. So if we hire a full-time PE position, which we had people that wanted to apply if it was going to be full-time, we're able to free up Josh to be an athletic director for the district, we're still gonna need to keep that middle school stipend position, because Josh can't be at two places at once, so that is still an important role. But it frees him up to be a full-time athletic director, we're able to reach all of our students through our PE program, and it just allows us to reach more kids.
So the total increase to that you can see is sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine. That's to bring that PE teacher on from part-time to full-time. Hopefully, we can fill it. I mean, I, I can't believe in this, in the old days, you know, there were plenty of PE people, right? Now, we can't even get an applicant for a part-time position, because they're taking full-time positions. So it does allow us to be competitive going forward and meet those student needs, and it also elevates that athletic director position, so that they're able to pay attention to, really, a five-through-twelve program and not just the, the high school aspect of it. So, but it's an extra add of sixty-five thousand.
What's the current stipend for the LMS athletic director?
I can get that for you.
Is it in here?
Yeah.
No, it's not, because what I did this year for all those stipend positions is take a total on a spreadsheet and put the bottom-line number instead of a million positions in there.
It's in the CBA.
But it's in the CBA, so I can get that for you.
But, I mean, estimate thirty-five?
Doctor Jettie, what's the CBA?
The collective bargaining agreement.
Oh, sorry.
That's my mistake.
I, I think it's like thirty-five hundred is my gut.
I think that would be about, I'll pull it.
Any thought on putting this on warrant?
So that's a possibility. I think that's something that, as we develop the warrant and develop the warrant articles, this is something that the board could certainly consider.
Is, the full-time business position would be a new position, right? Because you're changing it from part-time to full-time.
Except we have a PE teacher already.
The stance of the board has been that you're, you're basing that on enrollment, and so that's not a new position. We have a PE teacher, and so based on enrollment, it would be an adjustment that the board could make. But again, that's the pleasure of the board on how you want to proceed on that, but that's been the viewpoint in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does everyone have any questions?
I definitely have questions for Holly, yeah, so.
Did that make sense?
Can I just ask, are these guys done?
Yes.
Because, all right, run while you can.
Andrew, did that make sense on the page of the vacant position for special ed?
Kinda, I have to find, I have to find the offset in the printout, because I didn't see it in the Excel.
Okay, and that was, I was-
I'm not, that's why I have to find it in here.
I can tell you where it is.
I found it in the soft copy.
For LMS, it's on page nineteen.
Page nineteen.
So, so think of it this way, say we filled that position this year, that vacant position's name would be Sally, right? That's Sally's position. But underneath, it pulls us vacant from the system, because we don't have a person attached to it, we did not fill it. We don't plan to, and so then, right underneath it is where I put the reduction of that amount.
So are there any other listed vacant positions that will have a negative offset?
There are other vacant positions in this budget, but nothing else that was vacant that we-
Removed.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So what I've done for the board's benefit, and we'll go into more of this on Thursday, but to understand what I'm looking at, right, I took the soft copy, and as I've done in years past, ran it, looking at it, et cetera. Obviously, the biggest part of what we're talking about tonight is salaries and benefits, right? It's the biggest part of the budget, as you mentioned. One of the things that I saw was specifically on insurance. You're right, I mean, I can appreciate the one and a half percent on dental. I see a ten percent increase in dental across the budget. That's just the percentage that I see looking at all the two-twelves.
Yep.
Right, it's a ten percent increase. And on the two-eleven increase for health insurance, I see a twenty-four percent increase, which doesn't align to the percentages that were presented tonight. It could be an opportunity to reduce our budget, and I'm hoping that it is for everyone's benefit, right? But what I don't know is-
Would that be maybe more-
Is what's in here, correct.
I would need to check.
There are more people signing up for medical insurance?
So if you would, if you would just take a second to go to- I'm trying to think, I don't want to single somebody out here, so bear with me, because our, our budget is so transparent by listing every person, I want to be careful on this.
So is it just, but if you go to regular ed at GMS, so page one at the very bottom.
It'll be page two, is what you're looking at, right?
It trickles over to page two, but basically, what ends up, it's, it's a little deceiving, because the way it gets budgeted, the collective bargaining agreement, the first year, right, which is the current year that we're in, is listed at the end of the budget as one big pool of money, and then it gets redistributed toward the individuals at the same time that you're budgeting the second year. So it looks like everybody's getting an eight percent raise, because we've now distributed the pool, and we've added the other three percent on top of that, right? So the appearance is that there are all these large increases. I think the same thing is happening with your health insurance.
It is.
It's a double increase, and that's why you're getting twenty percent, because we have ten percent, but we know it went up last year at-
Ten point eight.
Okay, and that's how you're getting that number, because it's a double allocation of those increases because of the way the collective bargaining is done. And so to offset that, Andrew, if you go to-
The very end of the budget under twenty-nine hundred, that's the lump sum increases that are put into, for dental or health, or the salary CBAs were put in there.
So the health insurance, the approved budget of two hundred and two thousand in the FY twenty-three-
Yep.
Approved, has then been distributed out across all the various players, and the second year has been added. So I think that's how it's happening, and I, I would need help figuring out how to, like, pull that back out? Like, where's that number to capture and to back, back out of all your numbers?
I don't see it.
So if you look at the salary line under the twenty-nine hundred, the three hundred and fifty-one thousand that's there is then sprinkled all throughout the budget with the second year added in on top of it. But that decrease of three fifty-one has to be backed out of those calculations.
That's salary, I'm good with that, I'm talking insurance, right? And I'm looking for, I'm looking for the, the offset in insurance.
Are you looking approved to requested? What is here? Like twenty, twenty-three approved to the twenty-four requested budget, is that what your, what is your spreadsheet run off of?
Yeah, so twenty, twenty-three approved for insurance, just to eleven, across the entire budget, was two point one five three million dollars.
Okay.
Just health insurance. What's being requested in twenty twenty-four is two point six eight nine million, which is an increase of twenty-four percent.
Does it, I'm, I'm just, I don't know how you're doing it, Andrew, but does it matter that the FY twenty-two actuals were three forty-eight as the comparison number?
See, this, and this is, this is where I need to walk you through, because you're looking at it on a page as representing a specific section. I'm looking at it across all of the pages together.
Right. But I guess what I'm saying here is, does it difference from going, just looking at on page two, just this one section, just here?
Yeah.
It goes, the actual was three forty-eight, the budgeted was, for twenty-three was two ninety-nine, and then the requested is three sixty-one, so the but, the increase from two ninety-nine to three sixty-one, I think, is that twenty-four percent, but looking at the actual, three forty-eight to three sixty-one is half that. So I'm wondering if that accounts for the difference. Do you see what I'm saying?
Maybe, I'll have to look at it.
Okay, but you can walk us through it on Thursday, I'm just, I'm curious if that might be-
So for awareness, what I'm seeing right now, and I'd love to be able to get more information on it, is why, right? I'm glad to send this to the board, right, so everyone can see it, I just was doing it today myself, so.
I'd like to add on to that, if you don't mind, so, and again, not to single anybody else, but you know, at, at this, I'm looking at, at five first-grade teachers. I have no idea what they took for health insurance last year, but if one went from, like, no plan to a family plan, that's gonna increase about twenty-five thousand, right?
Absolutely.
So I think that's, that's a digging that we might-
It's the, it's definitely, when you're looking at the approved budget to the requested budget, so even if you look at on page two, health insurance for regular ed teachers, it shows an increase of sixty-one thousand dollars, but that is the approved budget for that line, not including the increase from last year, because that's funded in a totally different line, and then the requested budget this year is at their actual rates right now, that doesn't include the ten percent increase, because that's budgeted in a totally different line.
So what I'd like to do, right, is when I send this to the board, I'm gonna send it to you.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, and let's see if we-
Call me, and we'll talk about it, and I can walk you through it.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Keeps us all informed. Which I think you did promise that you would send your, your report to us, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
From my perspective, I would like, you know, it's fine that you go over everything, but I think you just go over what your concerns are, and then let's just try to get answers for Thursday.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I don't expect you guys, you don't have it in front of you either.
No.
But I'm raising the question under the question section.
And if, if you could share that with Doug and me and Holly, so that the board and the three of us get it, that would be helpful to dig in.
Yep.
It's really tricky, and this only happens in the first year of a new agreement. In the second year, it's not the same, so, but this, every single year, this, this same scenario presents, and people think we've given ten percent raises, and we simply haven't.
I appreciate you doing that, Andrew, I just want to be able to see it as well, so thank you.
Or not just the first year of agreement, but in this case, Andrew, we're talking about health and dental, so in the past, and maybe we need to go back to this, I used to, like, in the system, when I'm saying, okay, Sally's gonna go on to master step ten, I would take at that point for each person and say, we're, we're gonna put in a ten percent increase. So then it was on the actual line of the person, for the past couple of years, we've just said, okay, this is crazy, because then we're going back and either reducing it or adding it, so I bring over insurance from twenty-three to twenty-four on what we're actually paying right now, and then put the increase at the end. So when you look line to line, too, that looks confusing, so.
How many employees have health insurance?
I'd have to look at the bill and count for you, I don't know off the top of my head.
Name a few in here, I'm just curious.
One?
Yeah.
So my only other question, and I'm not gonna get into it tonight, because I want to give everyone the benefit to look at it, right, is I've done similar analysis just on salaries, okay, and I think it's helpful to, to review that.
Yeah, absolutely.
What, what number are you looking at, Andrew? Is it like eight, eight or nine percent?
For salaries?
Yeah.
Uh, I actually haven't done the percentage.
Okay.
So I can do that, but I haven't done that yet.
I just, I reacted to, you know, we're saying ten and you're saying twenty, and I'm like, it's that double thing.
Yeah.
And if you were telling me it was eight or nine, I'd be like, again, it's the double, I think.
It could be, because I'll just give a general count, right? I see a hundred and thirteen individuals with a five percent raise or greater.
Yeah, and nobody, well, I shouldn't say nobody.
Yeah.
I, I would find it, there's no way there's that number that, that got that kind of raise.
Oh, I circled a few that look like they got big raises.
It's the double.
Yes.
It's the raise rate.
There's sixty with ten percent or higher.
Yeah, exactly.
And this, that didn't happen.
So that's why I have a question, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Let's share it, and we'll go over it and get answers.
And on Thursday, I'll walk the board through everything that I have here. Okay?
Yep, and tomorrow, Andrew will look at that and then try to get some, get some clarification as to why.
Okay.
Any other questions? Can we move on to community input from the Budget Committee?
Just one, one other thing that is important for the board to understand. So our collective bargaining agreement stipulates that if, as soon as we are seriously contemplating a reduction in force, we are required to notify both the association, associations, and also the employees in the group. So as all of this was coming together, we, we handed out letters last week. A letter went to Patrick as the president of LIA, to Kathy as president of LSSA, and then to all the employees that are in that group. So every special educator, because they're all K-12 positions, they all got a letter saying, we're contemplating this. We were able to say, it's two positions, one is absor, it's not filled, so it's not a person, and then the other, you know, would be a process that is outlined in the collective bargaining agreement. But I can tell you, the minute you hand an employee a letter that says their job is being taken away, it causes panic. That panic ripples through the, the school community, and it also ripples through the community. So the fact that the board is getting letters and the Budget Committee is getting letters is not a surprise, because we follow the contractual obligation. There is no perfect way to do that, and there is no smooth process to that. They are not pleasant letters to hand out. Principals and Hotley took care of that, but it does cause unrest, and I just want to say that out loud, because it's not a good situation. But last year, we did the same thing, and we were able to absorb, I believe, all the positions just through attrition, so it didn't result in a person, it just resulted in absorbing positions that were vacated. There's no guarantee that that's how it will play in the future, so we have to play, we have to go through the motions that are outlined in the CBA.
Thank you. I'm gonna open it up for questions from the Budget Committee?
I have two, but I can't find the first one.
Because you're old.
Target one, it was, and I thought it was the middle school, and I talked about an increase, it was like nine thousand dollars and eight thousand dollars, all in the same one. It was confusing the answer that was given, so, but I'll come back to that one. But actually, because Josh is still here, so going back to the PE teacher, part-time, full-time, and the cost, what you did mention is you're not replacing the PE assistant that was had, we had last year, right? So I'm just curious what the savings is from that position, and what is the part-time position dollars save? It almost sounds to me like that would be a wash.
So the, the administrative assistant was one of the positions that we cut last year, so that absorption's already occurred, there's no more to absorb from that, Brian, but that was about a twenty-three thousand dollar position, I think.
Twenty hours, three, twenty, that's, yeah.
And then you have part-time position right now that you don't have filled, so I'm just curious, what was budgeted for those dollars?
Yep. Let us get you that number.
Part-time PE position, so that increase on the slide, part-time to full-time, was taken into account what's budgeted already for the part-time position, so it's to increase it the other fifty percent and adding benefits onto it, so on.
Page twelve, Holly, at the bottom.
Yeah, so the, um. Okay, so when I budgeted this on accident, here's an error, you see, fifty-nine thousand, I budgeted this full-time, so basically took a reduction of twenty-nine to make it a part-time position, because it's roughly about thirty-five thousand. So to add in from part-time, where you're only paying salary and taxes, what are slideshow, about fifty-three thousand, I think, would be added to the budget to make it full-time. You're adding the other fifty percent of the salary, taxes, then you gotta add in retirement insurances. So the part-time position is in the current, or the proposed budget.
Thank you.
Did you find your other one, Mr. Brown?
Oh, yeah.
Was it a smart board, Brian?
Was it the smart board, Brian?
I just don't see eight thousand and nine thousand in mine, in my, my, I don't see anything in mine.
So, it wasn't yours.
Was it the smart board?
I think it was food service on page one.
Oh, food service?
I think so. That was my, that was my second.
He's old.
Yes. Tyra asked a question.
Yeah, so, again, the nine thousand is for one employee, the eight thousand is for a group of employees, increase to a group of employees type of thing. We just put it into one line, because we don't know what the exact increase is at this point. Page one, personnel, so in the middle of page one, line, count to eleven.
So, this eight thousand dollars is...
That's the increase of ten percent.
For all of the employees in here. I just put it under the district wide line.
No, I got that, that's the ninety-five hundred I don't understand.
Oh, okay, so, the ninety-five hundred was the requested budget for just this employee under district-wide cost of their health insurance, because, so, in order to get these two numbers to add together, you have to put the nine there. So, the ninety-four was insurance for just this one person under here.
So, is that new insurance?
No.
No.
So, if I didn't have this health insurance increase there, that ninety-four would be here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Your question answered, Brian?
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Will the new positions be going on a warrant article for the voters to decide?
Which new positions?
The ones that were just posted up there, the PE teacher and a couple others that have been mentioned.
That was a lot of information that we just received this evening, so I think the board...
So, it was a PT, PT, PE teacher, and are you talking about the leads for special ed?
Will the new positions?
Mental health.
Oh.
Mental health.
The LMS.
At LMS, and then, uh, I mean...
We have an AD.
Can you send us the overview sheets?
Yeah.
We usually have those.
The slideshow?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we usually have a summary page.
Yeah, I didn't share it with you, because the second part's not ready for Thursday, but I'll get it to you. You'll have it.
Could you share, there was an attrition slide presented as well.
Yep.
Thank you.
All of it. We'll go back to you until Larry, until we finish the whole two days. Anyone else have any questions?
Can the board clarify for the new principal of the district?
Which one?
What positions would have to go on a warrant article? What would be considered a new position?
That's a great question.
Debate, isn't it?
I know.
Depending on your asking definition, other people have a different definition.
The town has a longstanding, um, a longstanding process in place where any new position will go to warrant article for the voters to decide on.
However, the warrant also included expanded positions as well as new positions, and that is where the debate often devolves.
Well, I appreciate the clarity on that.
Absolutely.
Do we also do part-time positions as well?
We can fill that in.
Sorry?
Nothing.
Okay, did that answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Hes, thank you. Anyone else?
Um, I, I think, just a question for the board. Do you want to try to schedule a meeting for next week?
Yes.
Um, I, I'm assuming that my prediction is, we're not going to be done on Thursday.
Correct.
So, Election Day is Tuesday. Um, I'm not available Tuesday, because I'll be at elections all day.
Yeah, your parent teacher conferences Monday night.
Parent teacher conferences are Monday night, and so I think that's bad.
All day Tuesday.
I think you're, I think you're ultimately...
We have facilities on Wednesday. We could do it after facilities, the tour at LMS.
That's my suggestion. So, we're, we're there at, uh, where is it? We're there at three-thirty. Um, the tour's gonna take about an hour, so we, we'd be done about four-thirty, and we could meet at LMS where there. We don't have to necessarily move somewhere.
I will not be present.
Your call. Too early?
On Wednesday?
I will not be present on Wednesday.
Not available at all?
Not available.
So, why, I'm sorry, can we clarify why we won't be ready on Thursday? I mean, the schedule's been out there for months. Why are we not expected to be ready?
It sounds like we're, we're thinking about, the board's thinking about, we need an extra meeting to get through discussion and motion, given, given the budget that we're seeing. And as a result of that, I don't know that there's going to be time after Thursday's meeting to get through all the motions and reductions that the board needs to make.
Agreed.
So, I wonder, throwing it out there, we have Budget Committee representation in the room tonight. There's four weeks of Budget Committee sessions on November seventeenth, first, eighth, and fifteenth of December. If in those four meetings with budget sessions, that is sufficient to get through the school budget, if we can delay sending them, or delay the Budget Committee starting the school budget review until the seventeenth. That gives us our meeting on the sixteenth to get final motions and reductions.
It also gives you a day on the tenth.
I guess that would be a Budget Committee decision, not a school board decision.
Correct.
I, I'm just throwing it out there, right, because there's five scheduled meetings for the Budget Committee to go through the budget.
Right. The tenth is a Thursday.
So, can we decide this on Thursday after the Budget Committee talk decides? Is that an option?
The Budget Committee's not meeting this week.
Or you're... Oh, okay.
We don't have a regular meeting until the tenth.
Thursday.
Well, can I also say, the tenth, we, the Budget Committee meets at seven, could we meet before that meeting? I, I just have a conflict on the seventeenth, and Heidi's gonna be my backup, and I would really love to be at the meeting.
I think the tenth, you probably want to have the budget done and copied it.
I, I, I guess what I'm hoping, so, looking, your next meeting is, well, we have a meeting tomorrow, regular school board meeting, then we have the budget presentation on, on the third. I don't believe we're gonna be ready to finalize the budget on the third. I could be wrong about that.
No, we have a lot of discussions.
So, I'm, I'm suggesting the ninth, so that we can then get it finalized on the tenth to present to the Budget Committee on the tenth, although they've seen the presentation. I think we're just updating them on exactly where we landed, what the numbers are.
What was the reason for not being able to meet on the eighth? Just, is it because it's Election Day?
Election Day, I'm, I'm, I'm at the polls all day. I'll, I'll be counting at this time.
On the seventh?
Still, hand counting, by the way.
Oh, that's, oh, why can't we push the date to the next week?
I mean, I could do, I could do the seventh, I mean, I...
You have conferences, I have conferences.
I, I have them earlier in the afternoon, okay.
Could we postpone it till the seventeenth?
I'd rather, I'd rather not postpone it.
But I want Andrew to be there on the ninth. I want us all to be there. Can we meet prior to the, but, no, that won't be enough time either.
There's no good window between the seventh and the ninth to meet.
Are you available the tenth?
I'll have to check on flights.
I just don't think we'd be able to get the, if there's any adjustment to the budget, I wouldn't be able to get that ready to the Budget Committee, if we met on the tenth for their tenth meeting as well.
You're gonna have the same problem then, if we meet the sixteenth for the seventeenth.
Correct.
No, because I could do it on the seventeenth, the morning of the seventeenth.
So, do we, do we ask for an extension of a week?
Friday?
The eleventh?
Fourth.
My preference is, is for the, is for the board to do its diligence, to take the time we need to get through the budget. I understand it's painful for the Budget Committee, and I appreciate that. However, I think it's prudent of the board to review the budget at our next scheduled meeting on the sixteenth, and then hand it to the Budget Committee on the seventeenth.
I'm not gonna be able to go to that Budget Committee meeting on the seventeenth, just telling you that.
I'm getting looks from the back of the room.
Right, makes my job easier. If I don't have time to ask questions, you know how I'm going.
In the past, hasn't the school board made motions at these joint sessions and reductions?
Yes.
I think if I had had summary and, like, the new, the, the position changes and the reorg changes ahead of time, I, I might be in a position where I could, I could make motions. Um, I mean, we could make some motions if, if people feel comfortable with that. I mean, I can vote, I'm, I can vote on food services, the school budgets.
I need to understand the salary and benefits part of this before I can make motions.
I, I wholeheartedly, as a Budget Committee member, I wholeheartedly agree with you. I'm disappointed in the timeline. I think that this should have been addressed earlier instead of waiting until tonight to find out that it's not going to be done in time.
So, why don't we hold?
Well, it was just at the last meeting that we, that, you know, that Andrew brought up, that he'd like to do this analysis, so I believe that that's an important part of this that wasn't factored in when the timeline was developed.
One point five million, as you discussed, I, we'll have a different opinion.
What if we, what if we vote on the other sections tonight that we, that we feel comfortable with, and then we can have the discussion and hopefully add salaries and benefits to the, the voting on our next meeting?
Yeah.
I don't know that there's a whole lot to cut from the other section, so, for me, for me, I don't, I mean, for me, it's a straight, I'm gonna accept the budgets...
Of the schools.
Of the schools as presented this evening.
And the food services.
Without, without general fund salaries.
I agree.
And the other, do we, do, sorry, I'm not the charity mark, sorry.
Do you feel comfortable voting on food services and the school budgets this evening?
I just don't know what it gets us to do that this evening.
Then we only have the last two to do on the third, and we stay till it's done.
But our motion to approve is gonna take ten seconds.
Yeah.
It's gonna take ten seconds tonight, or it's gonna take ten seconds on Thursday?
Fair enough. I say we work all the way through to the third.
It's taking longer to discuss, discussing it. And, Kathy, question. Andrew, do you feel like you would have adequate time on Thursday to go through personnel, be comfortable to make any changes that evening?
I'm hopeful that once I'm able to get with our HR director to review salaries and benefits, that we'll have some type of understanding coming out of that session, and that will allow me to make motions perhaps even Thursday.
And you'll share them with the board?
Yeah.
My preference is to not change the timeline, so that if we can do that, that would be ideal.
Okay, let's see what we can do over the next forty-eight hours.
And we're here for the long haul on Thursday. Take a nap.
Do you have any time tomorrow to...
We'll connect.
I feel confident that Andrew and Holly will work through that and share their findings.
And then, Andrew, will you send that over to us tomorrow?
You'll get it tonight.
Okay.
Awesome.
Any other questions, comments? And, how do I spend a meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn![1791.22]